All right, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 7th, City Council Regular Meeting. Madam City Clerk, if you can go ahead and do the roll call.
Mayor Kristi Malchow. Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark. Councilmember Karen Moran. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Here.
Thank you.
I would like to mention that Mayor Malchow and Councilmember Moran will be joining us shortly. So, Councilmember Stewart, can you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then, for, I believe, the first time, we do have a land acknowledgement. Councilmember Lamb, would you mind reading that?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salage peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So by, let's see, what do we have? Four to one, it passes. All right, next is public comment. So the public is welcome to attend City Council meetings in person or virtually through Zoom. I don't know if we have anyone in the room to start. I think we'll start with that first. Thank you so much. Sweet, cool. All right, first, Jennifer Kim. And Jennifer, I know you sent a PowerPoint as well, so thank you for sending that in.
Thank you. All right, I haven't done it with this way before, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I think it can help you out there.
Okay, so Jennifer Kim, 4001, 239th Place. So one of the reasons why my family moved to Simamish was for the excellent schools. So both of my kids have attended the public elementary, middle, and now high schools, and they have received an education that has equaled private schools. And we could not have chosen a better school for our kids. But the current state of our schools in Simamish is changing. Our population has grown by 91% since 2000, and our current population is over 67,000. And according to the latest census, 32% of our population is under 18. That is one of the highest in the state. Simamish schools are ranked very highly in the state, and the majority of new families move here just for the schools. Now, schools by law must serve all students and cannot turn any student away, which is why our schools are so overcrowded. And the majority of our schools are near the maximum capacity or over, even with the anticipated lower enrollment this year. Skyline High School's max capacity is 1547. This year's enrollment was 2258. That's 711 students over the maximum. Pine Lake Middle School's max capacity is 834. Last year's enrollment was 959. That's 125 students over the max. In a joint letter from the Issaquah and Lake Washington School District, they said, I quote, "Developable land for schools within the urban growth area is scarce." And they said that the remaining property is mostly developed or lacks the size for a school. So the council tonight is voting to remove school concurrency from our city code. Now, the GMA requires that cities take on mandated growth, but it also clearly states that you cannot have mandated growth without adding the necessary public facilities to support development, which includes schools. And right now, this is not happening. Due to a lack of new schools, the only solution has been to keep adding portables, which is just a Band-Aid to the bigger problem of overcrowding. And with the addition of high-density housing in the near future, our schools will not be able to handle the numbers of additional students. And by removing school concurrency, you are putting our schools at risk by forcing them to continue taking on more students when they're already at overcapacity. When the schools can't add more portables, the students will be bused to Redmond or Issaquah. You will be lowering the high quality of our schools and decrease the morale of teachers and students. And with decreased school ratings, our housing values will also decrease. By removing school concurrency, the city is not adhering to our legal rights that are granted by the GMA to have adequate facilities for our schools in anticipation of future growth. So I want to ask each of you why you decided to move to Simamish. And I ask you to act as stewards to the students who live here now and who are going to live here in the future by keeping school concurrency in our code. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Next, we have Maza here.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Mazaheer Punawala. I live in Simamish, 2073, 215th Place Southeast. I'm also going to speak on the same topic as Jennifer, and pretty much she summoned what I was wanting to say. I just look at you guys and, you know, Kent and Kristi, where are you? I'm trying to find, oh, she's not here today. But I remember the election we fought two, not this cycle, but one before, and the verdict was very clear. City residents said, "Development is secondary. First is, you know, children, greenery, things like that," right? That was the clear message. Last election, it was kind of 50-50, not very much, but that's what the people wanted. And I look at you guys and say, hey, why aren't you listening to what the people are telling you? The majority of people are concerned about the development that is happening without any increase in other infrastructure and things like that. Look at 244th Avenue. We have added so many houses on that, and it's still two lanes, single two lanes in one direction. Nothing has improved there. 228 is just an arterial between Safeway and QFC. Otherwise, it's two lanes on both the directions again. If there's a major calamity, we can't get off. Just two weeks or three weeks ago, I was at Skyline High School and going back home with my daughter, and there was a medical emergency, and an ambulance was trying to get from Skyline side down towards QFC. He had to move to the other side and very silent waiting, had to go down 228. That is very, very risky, because people are coming out of communities, you know, it's a split-second thing. Yeah, you can hear the siren, but you can't see the ambulance, because he had no option. So you're putting people's lives at risk. We have a lot of senior citizens who live on the plateau, who rely on this. They need a heart attack. Two minutes to four minutes is a matter of life and death. So this traffic, this concurrency, is very, very important for children, for adults, for each of us. So I again beg of you, not, I mean, I'm just literally begging and saying, hey, look, the people of Simamish have told you, you need to do this, you know? Yes, developers, all they care about is big houses. But that's the job. They make money. If you don't develop, where are they going to make their money? So that's all they think about. They don't care about environment. They don't care about children. They don't care about people. That's not their job. It's our job, and we have elected you to represent us, and our voice was very clear. No new development until you don't solve all these problems. In the last six years, we have not solved any problems. There is no new road added to widen any of our roads. It's the same traffic. You go 212th, you go 228, you go 244th. Tomorrow, if there's a major fire, like we saw in California, how are you going to evacuate 60,000 people off the plateau? What are you going to do? We're just going to burn ourselves in. In the middle of 2:00 AM in the morning, lightning strikes, the fire starts. We had 100 degrees weather last year. You know how dry and tinderous city was. So you need to think like that. I know it's very easy to say, oh, you know, the law says, the GMA says, we have, no. We know what the GMA says. Yes, you have to control the growth. And there's some, I don't know all the numbers. Jennifer knows better, because she's more legal than I am. But there are things that we have that we can do. Look at Mercer Island. Look at, sorry, just one minute. Look at what is, Mercer Island and the Bellevue-Madine area. Those people are controlling it, just because they are rich in money, you know? Not that. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you so much. All right, Payton. And I know you sent PowerPoint as well, so we can look at that in review. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to speak a little bit on gondola. I've come up to the City Council, previous City Councils before, to talk about this, and I just wanted to restate a couple of things. So Simamish's transportation problems are numerous. We have extremely steep hills, narrow choke points, and it prevents us from doing things like expanding right-of-ways as much as we want, or adding bus lanes, which would help with stuff like traffic, or emergency access even. But what we can do is, we can add a gondola. And gondolas are an interesting solution for Simamish, because they can deal with vertical surfaces. So as steep as hills you can, a gondola will be able to go up it. And having a public transportation takes advantage of the fact that there's choke points to create efficiencies. If you have people being funneled to one location, that is an obvious location for a transportation stop. So in the future, if there's gondola, it would be currently in conflict with the power lines that we have in the city on 228th. So burying those power lines, I think, is something that the City Council would look into as part of this project. And that would create certain positive effects. Fewer power outages, because the power lines aren't exposed to trees. And you could also bury at the same time fiber-optic internet, even if it ends up being dark fiber for the time being. The City of Seattle does this, and it's part of this so-called "dig-wants" policy, where if you combine multiple projects into one dig, you can save a lot of money on building out infrastructure. So I just wanted to bring this up, because I know the city never got around, backed around to the Transportation Master Plan. And I know the City Council eventually intends to come back to that business after certain issues have been resolved. And it looks like you guys are making work on that. So I encourage you, when the time comes, to add high-capacity transportation corridors to Transportation Master Plan, so that we can begin studies involving town transit and potentially get on the way to getting federal grants for this kind of infrastructure that are available for small cities trying to build out and connect to the regions. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Payton. Is there anyone else in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, I think we'll move to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If you wish to speak regarding a public hearing, please do not raise your hand. When the public hearing begins, you will have an opportunity to give comment at that time. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see we have two commenters currently.
Am I on?
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right. Former Deputy Mayor Romero Valderrama. When you all joined the council, each of you, as I did, took an oath of office to support and maintain the laws of the State of Washington, ordinance of City of Simamish. Yet when it comes to following the Public Records Act, which requires that identifiable public records be made available to members of the public in a timely fashion, it appears that not all of the council members take the oath seriously. Each of you will also know that the City of Simamish has clear rules regarding devices and communicating with citizen staff and one another on city business. The city provides each of you with electronic devices and emails. Use of encrypted channels for communication is against the law and is hiding city business from the public. Now, we have Mayor Malchow, who alone to date fails to comply with Public Record 4280, asking that I would like to receive copies of all communications and copies of telephone calls and lists made with those encrypted devices with citizens. The city informed me that my PRR request would be completed on May 25th. It was made originally in January. Instead, on the 25th, I received messages from Mayor Malchow disingenuously citing that she had misinterpreted that very straightforward PRR request and hence sent me hundreds of pictures of her dogs and other unrelated social media and non-responsive requests. She then informed me that she would have to delay her response. Her peers all completed the response and had no confusion. If Mayor Malchow had not been breaking the city rules and regulations, all she needed to do is state and sign the affidavit. Instead, Mayor Malchow now says she needs more time and will provide the information in installment, an implicit admission that she did violate state laws and city rules. Two weeks later and five months later, nothing has been received. If Malchow has been using encrypted devices to conduct city business, and the volume of such encrypted message is so great that it will require installments for her to provide it, what is she trying to hide from the public? City business is supposed to be conducted in the public eye, not on encrypted devices. This is just the latest episode of Malchowgate, underscoring the need for the council to look into this and many other of the serious allegations. Remember that Mayor Malchow also earlier, had been during the public open comment period, told me personally that if I wanted the taxpayer-funded city manager investigation report, I should submit a PRR, which I immediately did. And then, when it came to the council, Mayor Malchow publicly voted against its release. One has to ask why Mayor Malchow appears to be so intent on conducting city business in secret away from the eyes of the public. The citizens expect more and deserve more from the council and immediately, and especially from the leadership of our ceremonial mayor. I ask Mayor Malchow to immediately comply with state law and for the council to review its leadership that is now currently representing our citizens of our city. Our citizens deserve more than just receiving more Malchowgate. We need to be looking into.
All right, thank you, Romero.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and have a great day. Adios.
Right, I believe we have one more.
Okay, we have a few more who've raised their hands. Mr. King, I wanted to clarify. You had two people who wanted to comment on this issue.
Yes, myself and my colleague.
Okay, so you will be given three minutes, and then the next speaker will also get three minutes. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Marcus King. I'm the general manager at Sahale Country Club here in Simamish, address 21200 Northeast Sahale Country Club Drive. The code of Simamish.
Hello, Marcus.
Yes.
Sorry, pretty much just muted you that entire time. If you want to turn off maybe your video stream, just so we can make sure we can hear you, and then we'll restart your time, so sorry.
All right, I'll turn me.
It froze again, so maybe just turning off video incoming and outgoing.
All right. There we go. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
You can get my four-year-old son to look at instead, which is much better than looking at me. My name is Marcus King from Sahale Country Club, 21200 Northeast Sahale Country Club Drive. I'm the general manager. And we're here today to talk about the use of phosphorus-based fertilizers. We understand that y'all are examining the issue and removing the golf course exemption from the Simamish city code and make it aligned with the RCW. We understand the need to do that and to become in alignment with the state code. And we're not entirely opposed to removing the golf course exemption, but we do want to emphasize how important it is for us, and I'm sure for Plateau Club as well, to keep the two other exemptions that are in that code. The first being soil tests or other certification by turf specialists perform within three years previous to application indicating the level of available phosphorus in the soil is insufficient to support healthy turf growth. That is one exception. And the second one is for establishing turf via seed or sod procedures. Both of those we do already. As you can imagine, we're very cost-conscious, as are most homeowners and business folks, and we use as little as possible to keep our turf healthy. We are very proud to be in compliance with the Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary Guidelines, which also helps restrict what we can use on a golf course. It also includes an integrated pest management plan. We have been diligent in assuring that our effluent off the golf course, we have two sites where it connects to the city's stormwater system, and we have monthly maintenance on our system that connects to your system. So we are, as I mentioned, very good stewards of land. We use as few chemicals as we can to keep the grass green and growing and healthy. And we definitely consider ourselves to be good stewards. So from a practical perspective, our goal would be to keep the two exceptions that I mentioned, one for establishing new turf, and the other one for soil testing should be the soil or the plant be deficient in phosphorus. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marcus. I didn't catch the name of the other person, but when they start, if they can just state their name, and we'll get them started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name's Charlie Schauerker. I'm the golf course superintendent here at Sahale Country Club. Here at Sahale Country Club, we utilize a refined fertility program based on turf grass research and industry-best management practices. Part of this program is managing both macro and micronutrients for turf grass growth, including phosphorus. Phosphorus is one of the three primary limiting nutrients for turf grass growth, along with nitrogen and potassium. And phosphorus is key in healthy rooting, maturation, lateral growth, and stress tolerance of turf grasses. Here at Sahale Country Club, as Marcus mentioned, we utilize annual soil testing to manage our phosphorus levels and respond accordingly when we see deficiencies in the soil. We utilize several granular fertilizers to manage phosphorus levels near the threshold for acceptable turf grass growth. And we also use several phosphorus products called phosphites that are plant protectants and are part of our integrated pest management program to reduce the use of conventional pesticides. To conclude briefly, phosphorus is a very important nutrient for us here at Sahale Country Club to establish healthy turf grasses. And we pride ourselves on managing those phosphorus levels and those applications as good stewards of the land.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you. I will now promote the next commenter. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Simamish. Just wanted to chat a little bit about the latter part of your agenda and the Luma EIS, and a couple things, and some general comments. I support Alternative 1 with the additions of schools and dealing with choke points outside the city, safety, and complete streets, and transit and transit needs. In general, I've talked to hundreds of people about this, and without, well, maybe a couple exceptions. Without exception, if I ask the question, look, if congestions around schools at pickup and drop-off times could be significantly alleviated, and if choke points outside the city could be alleviated, where is there routine traffic issues? For the most part, I get there are none. Now, I will agree on the south end a little bit, maybe Issaquah, Pine Lake Road, coming home at 5:00, occasionally does. But in general, I think the EIS, in my opinion, should have focused on real congestion, which is mostly in Simamish from schools and choke points. So that's why I believe Alternative 1 is appropriate. And speaking the unspoken, there have been several views, ideologies, if you will, strong emotions over land use. And I believe that the EIS tact that was taken before V-Over-C was revoked was more a way to generate outcomes that cost a significant amount of money in the 400 to 500 million range, including right-of-way for road projects that simply weren't needed. What was needed is to work on schools and roads. Now, I get it, because I've tapped into the emotions of understanding what happens after information. And there's a lot of folks that are very passionate on their stand-on growth, and I get that. However, if we get information and really compare what the different land use ideologies are, minimize, very low-growth, or optimize, which has the best set of enrichments? And that's the way forward. Alternative 1 supports that, and it's time for our community to move down the road of getting the information, comparing consequences, and figuring out which path is best for our community. Have a good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else?
I see no more public commenters. Now back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next we have executive session. I think we have it slated for about an hour. I believe there are three issues, and we have pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. We may have action coming out of it, I believe, as well. So I think if we did 7:57, we'll be back.
The council has extended the executive session to 8:12 PM. The council has extended the executive session to 8:30 PM. The council has extended the executive session to 8:35 PM. The council has extended the executive session to 8:40 PM.
Can you hear me, because I can't hear anything?
Are you taking over?
Oh.
No?
I have no audio.
Oh.
Yes, I can take over, but not if I can't hear anything. So I may have to switch to my iPad. So I'm not sure why I don't have any audio here.
All right, I'll get started then. All right, so before we proceed, I'm going to open up the floor for any motions.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the City Council's outside legal counsel to request that Ms. Weber issue a final investigative report and that the report be prepared for production to the public with internal redactions, as recommended by outside legal counsel.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to, I think Kristi just hopped on. What was that?
I didn't hear the motion.
You were a yea. Oh, sorry, five.
I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't hear what the motion was. I'm not voting until I know what the motion is.
Got it. Councilmember Lamb?
Should I reread it? Can you hear it, Kristi? Can you hear now?
I can hear it, yeah.
I move to authorize the City Council's outside legal counsel to request that Ms. Weber issue a final investigative report and that the report be prepared for production to the public with internal redactions, as recommended by outside legal counsel.
And it was seconded by Councilmember Howe?
Seconded again.
Yeah. There was no discussion, unless you have an eMayor? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five-two, motion passes. And then Mayor Malcho, if you want to take over, the floor is open for motions.
Yep, I don't know, can you still see me?
Not now.
Just your picture.
Okay, okay. Unfortunately, because I'm now on my iPad, in order to look at my packet, I had to minimize the zoom, so that may pose a small problem unless I can get my iPad to work.
No, that's right, I'll keep going. Floor is still open for another motion.
I have a motion that we dispense with the Jaren matter and close off all further expenditures of a legal nature to pursue.
I will second that, even though we may need legal clarification on the motion.
Well, that was a horrible motion.
Appropriately.
I understood the motion to be to withdraw the appeal that's currently pending in Division One. Is that correct?
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I am interested in stopping spending money on attorneys when I don't feel it is necessary in the best interests of the city.
All right, is there any further discussion?
You got hands up.
What was that?
You have hands.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Mayor Malcho, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, this is precedent-setting, not just for the city of Samamish, but for every municipality that plans under the GMA, so I am opposed to this motion.
Councilmember Moran?
This specifically is for the best interest of the city. This is something that should be done for the city, and it is something that I feel very strong about. So I'm very disappointed to see that somebody who was not here through the whole series of this is making this motion, so I will be voting against it.
Councilmember Trine?
Again, we find ourselves on a council where I feel, again, I'm the minority, because you guys are giving away the power of our city to control our own destiny, and you're now handing it to the growth hearings board. That's a huge mistake. This is precedent, this is going to impact our city in the future, and not only Samamish, but it's also going to impact cities around King County. And so we had the opportunity to do something, take the lead on something, and this council is clearly showing that we are not willing to take the lead when it comes to fighting against development or even to even take on our own.
Point of order.
City to take care of.
State your point.
The decisions that we have in front of us.
I'm sorry, I've called a point of order, Councilmember Trine. So my point is that Councilmember Trine has gone off track and is making commentary on the council and not on the motion on the floor.
It's about the motion on the floor.
Point well taken.
That's the ruling that the council's making, Mayor, or Deputy Mayor Clark.
The council hasn't made a ruling yet.
You've made a motion to remove the appeal.
I think it was the extraneous comments that were added in, not just speaking to specific facts.
So what's the ruling?
Point well taken.
I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Again, I think it's important that we look at every case and every issue and every motion. This is not, there was no motion made to say we give up all local control, there was no motion made that says we, you know, don't care. The motion is very specific, and the motion is about a very specific case. It is inappropriate for us to discuss all that was discussed in executive session, we can't discuss that. So what we're stating and what the motion states is that we do not want to pursue this particular appeal on this particular case, and that is really all that the motion is about, and that is all we're looking at, because we are trying to, and every council member will make their own mind as to what is in the best interest of the citizens of Samamish, and how can we focus our energy, our resources, and our money to achieve the best outcomes for all of our residents in Samamish. So I'm sure we'll have differing opinions on this particular case, but I think it's really important that we stay focused on the issues, and the work that we're trying to do is, again, to look forward and to do what's in the best interest of the residents, and to focus as much energy and time and money as we can on things that we can do to help our residents. So thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, one of the things that we can do is to turn this motion down and disregard the motion, because it will not be helping the residents of the city of Samamish in the long term. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I don't see any hands. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
By a vote of four-three, motion passes. I believe that was all that we expected for executive session. What was that? Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, by a vote of seven-zero, consent calendar passes. Next, we have presentations and proclamations. So our proclamation for Juneteenth, do I have a volunteer to read that, if anyone has it in front of them? All right, Councilmember Stewart, go ahead.
Whereas we acknowledge on June 19, 1865, the last group of enslaved African-Americans were informed of their liberation in Texas two and a half years after the implementation of the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas, in order that we may never forget the evils of slavery and its aftermath, we acknowledge the injustices and suffering blacks experienced under slavery. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates the freedom, achievement, and contribution of Black Americans' past, present, and future. And whereas, to promote racial healing, reconciliation, and justice, it is important to recognize the significance of Juneteenth and continue engaging in dialogue on race relations. And whereas, during this Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African-American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and we commit to working together toward equitable experiences and opportunities for all. Now therefore, the city of Samamish do hereby proclaim June 19, 2022 to be Juneteenth, 2022, in the city of Samamish, and we encourage all to join in this celebration.
All right, thank you so much. Next is resolution establishing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for the city of Samamish. So our interim city manager and, I think, Mike Sugg. Let you guys take over.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to ask Mike to present this particular resolution, and then we can have a follow-up conversation if council wants. Mike?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Mr. Interim City Manager, Mike Sugg, Senior Marriage Analyst for the City Manager's Office. This agenda item is a resolution for council's consideration that would add June 19, also known as Juneteenth, as a paid holiday for city employees beginning this year. As we just heard in the proclamation immediately before this item, Juneteenth is a day that celebrates the end of slavery in practice in the U.S., and it serves as an opportunity to recognize the contributions of African-Americans to our country. Juneteenth is the oldest celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery and has in recent years been recognized as a holiday by a growing number of jurisdictions across the U.S. This includes the federal government and the state of Washington, both of which passed legislation in 2021, recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for their employees. It also includes the cities of Issaquah, Redmond, and Bellevue, as well as King County and several other agencies in the region. So tonight, the interim city manager is recommending that council consider approving the draft resolution, which is Exhibit One in your agenda materials tonight, and this action would establish Juneteenth as a paid holiday for city staff, and this year it will be observed, the holiday will be observed by closing the city's offices on Monday, June 20th, as the 19th falls on the Sunday. This action would also support efforts to strengthen and prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city by bringing awareness to Juneteenth and offering time for employees to celebrate and reflect on this important day. Regarding the financial impact of the additional holiday, staff characterizes the impact as a productivity loss rather than a direct financial cost, and this is because the budgeted salary expenses would be no different than they would if employees were working on that day. However, if we were to assign a number to it, our finance department estimates the value attributable to one-day salaries for hourly employees is approximately $30,000. And that is my brief introduction of the resolution, and with that, I will turn it back over to the Deputy Mayor for any questions or discussion.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, are you looking for action from the council or direction?
The, sorry, let me catch up to myself. Thank you, councilmember. There is a resolution attached, and the recommendation is that council approve the resolution, which would designate it as a holiday in Samamish.
Then I move that we approve the resolution. Do we need to read that into the record, or is it just enough to state that we would approve a resolution of the city of Samamish establishing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for city of Samamish employees?
I think that's sufficient. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Stewart, do you want to speak to your motion?
I would just like to say thank you to the interim deputy city manager for bringing this forward, and I fully support it, and I'm very excited to see the city moving in this direction. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? By a vote of seven-zero, the resolution, excuse me, passes. Next, we have a presentation. This is the award for Issaquah Falls City Road Project, and then turn this over to Jeff Alakish and Jed Ireland. I think we need to wait for them to be promoted. Here we go.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and interim city manager. My name is Jeff Alakish, Public Works Director. Tonight's presentation will be led by Jed Ireland. Its purpose is, the purpose of tonight's presentation will be for the council to receive a national award for the Issaquah Falls City Road Phase One Transportation Project. As I mentioned, our primary speaker will be Jed Ireland, although I would imagine the mayor may have a few words as well, if she were in attendance. So Jed, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I've unmuted myself, I apologize. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The recipient of the 2022 Engineering Excellence Awards is the Issaquah Falls City Road Project, presented by the American Council of Engineering Companies. They bill themselves as the Academy Awards of Construction Engineering Projects. They focus on recognizing projects with technical and unique solutions that are significant in America and around the world. This project was selected in the transportation category because of its technical, economic, and social value merits. Over to the next one. The award banquet was held in Washington, D.C. on May 24th this year, and was attended by the mayor, and then also I represented staff, and then also a staff member from H.W. Wagner, the design engineering firm, who also did the construction management during construction. The project was highlighted for three main categories, or three main benefits. Relieving congestion was the number-one item, is that the corridor was expanded from two lanes to four lanes. When this project was first initiated by King County, it was in the 90s when it was promoted as a project that was prioritized, and for various reasons, it wasn't constructed. The traffic at that time was 9,000 vehicles per day, and at the time of construction, it had gone up to 24,000 vehicles per day. And so that just shows you the amount of growth in the region. The corridor has regional significance, and so, of course, relieving congestion was a big issue. In addition, it reduced the economic cost of wear and tear on the roads by reducing the amount of trucking. That was one of the advantages of a bridge solution rather than a fill-and-covert solution, similar to what was already out there for the two-lane road section. Other benefits were improving safety by reducing that sag, which is now replaced by a bridge. I just realized that, am I not visible? Okay, doesn't matter. I don't know how to fix that.
It's okay, we can see the presentation.
Okay, good. The benefits are improving safety. There was rare collisions, icy conditions because of the old sag curve that's been eliminated because of the bridge, and it also encourages greater use by non-motoredized users because of the elimination of the steep grades. Preserving wildlife, of course, the bridge, it bridges North Fork Issaquah Creek, it created habitat, it improved habitat in the stream and the wetland buffer, and it also improved the access as a wildlife corridor. And of course, a number of the features for the stormwater reduced surface runoff and improved water quality. The project used bio swales between the street and the sidewalk, and also filtera treatment units to improve water quality for low-flow condition to the road. Those are also known as a tree-in-a-box, which uses the tree and the root action to eliminate petrochemicals in the runoff. This is the exhibit board that was shown in Washington, D.C., that is outlining some of the, some of the photos and the benefits of the project. In addition, this was the award on the left that was awarded to the mayor, and on the right is just a photo of our view of the, again, it does, looks very similar to the Academy Awards. And so this project was actually awarded twice, once in Washington, D.C. for the national award, and then secondly, also locally in Bellevue earlier for a silver award at the Bellevue Weston. Washington State was well-represented, I just wanted to mention some of the other categories. This is the whole nation that is being recognized, all the projects around the nation, but Washington also recognized the Rainier Square Tower, 58 stories for construction methods, the North Gate Link Light Rail Extension, sound transit, Climate Pledge Arena, home of WNBA Seattle Storm, and NHL Seattle Kraken. So again, it was just an exciting time to be part of that unique opportunity. And with that, I'll open up to council.
Mayor, back to you.
Thanks, Jeff. I can't see anyone except for Jeff in the screen. So I don't know if anyone has their hand up or not, because all I see is Jeff. I think it may be that we need to minimize Jeff.
Mayor, if I could, maybe Jed, if you could close out of sharing, and that way the mayor could see all of us on screen again.
There we go. Now I can see everyone. Anyone have any questions? I'll, no, I'll just throw out, though, that, you know, the council as a body just voted on these items. I want to give credit where credit is due, and that is with the Public Works team, as well as Lochner, for their efforts in bringing these ideas forward to council so that we could consider them. I know that the bridge option was the more expensive option, but it was also the more environmentally friendly, it was approved by the tribes, and we ran a lot fewer dump trucks on our roadways than we would have. It was approved by the tribes, and we ran a lot fewer dump trucks on our roadways than we would have if we'd had to pull in a bunch of fill material to take out the dip in the road and then dropped a box culvered in instead of a bridge. So kudos to the Public Works team and Lockner for the design work on, on the project that yielded the award. So thank you. All right, so next we are going to move to, let's see, I gotta scroll here, first of several public hearings this evening. The first public hearing we have is considering an ordinance, mending Samamish Development Code 21.06.040. This is the adequacy of public facilities and services and SDC 21.09.020. Hearing examiner providing for severability and establishment effective date. So I think we have David Pyle and Lindsay Channing, who are going to kick us off on this one, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, mayor. Counsel David Pyle, Community Development. This evening, we have for you a brief presentation on the topic of school impact fees and the proposed repeal of that section of code from the city's municipal code, followed by opening of the public hearing and discussion with the council. Tonight, we have Lindsay Channing of Community Development, who will be presenting, and I'll turn it over to Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. This evening, I'll be presenting on school concurrency. The, for the process for this evening, staff's proposing that we'll give an overview of the process and proposed changes, address any initial questions you may have, and then turn it over to the public hearing and city count, potential city council deliberation and decision. So we're here this evening so that we can hear public comment and that council can deliberate on code changes regarding repeal of certain code sections as they pertain to school concurrency requirements. These proposed changes are part of the agenda packet as Exhibit One. The intent behind these changes is to lessen the city's legal risk while working diligently with our school district counterparts and the community at large to ensure districts and students' needs are met from a school capacity standpoint to the best of our ability. This also is addressed in the legal memo. That's Exhibit Two in the agenda packet. This memo has been provided to council previously. The Planning Commission did recommend draft code amendments on March 17th, 2022, after conducting a public hearing and deliberating. Their recommendation is Exhibit Four of the agenda packet. And then, as I mentioned at the opening of this presentation, we had a work session on this item with council on May 3rd. So for some brief background on how we got to the point that we're at today, city council discussed school concurrency. It's been a point of discussion for a number of years now, and gave staff initial direction in late 2020 and early 2021 regarding potential amendments to pertinent code sections so that the staff review would align with code as it was written. Staff completed this review process in 2021 and early 2022, and came to council on February 8th of this year with two options to move forward with. After considering these options, counts direct, excuse me, council directed staff to move forward with the following option, which was to repeal Samamish Development Code 21.06.040I, J, and L, and also SDC 21.09.020T4 regarding school concurrency in favor of an enhanced information sharing process with the city's school districts and a collaborative code amendments that would be forthcoming to facilitate appropriate school improvements. These enhanced information sharing, I'll walk you through in the following slide. That's a flow chart. And then the facilitation of appropriate school improvements are things that are being considered, things like an expedited permit processing standpoint for school districts, exceptions and exemptions from certain actions, and also prescriptive requirements for facility standards, things that might apply to requirements for portables, for example. So this process flow chart, I'll walk you through, but it outlines this would most likely be a long plat or a large subdivision. So the applicant has a proposal, and they first contact the city. The city would go through initial outreach with the applicant, answer their initial questions, and then direct them to a pre-application conference, which is required. At that point, an informational notice is sent to the school district, inviting them to participate in this pre-application conference. It also gives them the initial information that the city has been given so that they can prepare for that conversation. The, once that pre-application conference has been conducted and the applicant has completed all of the applicable applications and have compiled their packet of information necessary to submit for their proposal, they'll submit it to the city. The staff then will review the application materials, and if complete, and it's deemed complete, then there's a Safe Routes to School questionnaire that we send to the school district for them to answer a number of questions. We ask that this questionnaire is returned within two weeks of receipt by the school district representative. We then are at the point in the process where the city would issue a notice of application, which opens the comment period on the proposal. This may also include a SEPA Environmental Checklist Comment Period. At this point, notice is sent to a number of applicable parties, neighbors, posted in the paper, things of that nature, and this notice is, one of the notices sent is sent to the applicable school district. The district can submit their comments during that comment period. And then theoretically, the comment period would be closed, the application and all materials are continued to be reviewed. A revision section portion of the process could occur in this area. Depending on the revisions, it might need to go back to another notice of application due to amendments or changes. Again, the district would be given an opportunity to provide any comments that they have. Once this cycle is completed and the city's ready to make a recommendation to the hearing examiner, or if they're the final decision maker, make that decision, a notice is sent out to the district and other applicable parties of what that decision is, and the project is considered complete. So overall, this process usually spans anywhere from a year to three years to get from we have a project to a decision on the project. Other points of engagement are through the capital planning policies through King County. It used to be called the PF-19A, which is an annual district meeting to assess capacity needs. It's now called the PF-22 Meeting, and it's a biannual meeting that the city has participated in and continues to participate in with the school districts. There are periodic ad hoc informational meetings with district staff. There's informational meetings regarding policy and bond measure efforts that occur between the school districts and city staff. And there are also city staff members that participate in other activities such as participating in advisory committees with the school districts. Also, as we've mentioned, there are other tools that we have that we use and will continue to use during project review. One of the main ones being the SEPA Environmental Checklist option. It's required unless there's, the project meets any of the categorical exemptions listed in our development code, which is located in 21.09.030C. If during the SEPA review period, if the school district identifies any inadequate capacity for a project, additional mitigation measures could be implemented through the SEPA threshold decision. Many times you'll see a SEPA determination of nonsignificance, but if we were notified or found that there was inadequate capacity during this review, the city could issue a mitigated determination of nonsignificance, which would give additional conditions on the proposal that need to be met, things such as extended timing, phase build-out, so that there's time for the schools to catch up or students to cycle through, or it could even trigger a determination of significance, which then leads into an environmental impact statement. Other overarching regulations that we follow is Washington Administrative Code 197114442, double little i. This requires school capacity to be considered through SEPA as schools are an element of the environment where impacts must be considered. Of course, unless there's an exemption, so SEPA would not apply. Again, RCW 5817060 and 110 refers to short plats and subdivisions, and that they must be evaluated to ensure appropriate provisions are made, first things such as playgrounds, schools, and school grounds, and that there are available features that assure safe walking conditions for students who only walk to and from school. So I did briefly, on this previous slide, walk through the MDNS and the DS process. But just to highlight that, the timeline to get through mitigated determination of nonsignificance is typically about nine months. There's an appeal of this determination that goes to the, our hearing examiner. So the applicant or a member of the public could appeal a determination of mitigated determination of nonsignificance of surrounding a determination of significance. This could be if it results in identifying a major shortage of classroom space, for example. This would require completion of an environmental impact statement. It requires that reasonable alternatives are studied along with a no-action alternative. There's, could include phasing plans, financial contributions by the developer, changes to project design that would reduce density. And an environmental impact statement typically takes 18 months to two years to complete. There is, again, a local appeal of this determination, and that is also to our hearing examiner. And that could be any party of record that can appeal that. So it could be a resident, it could be the developer, project proponent. So the Planning Commission's recommendation on March 17th was a five-to-zero vote to recommend that city council approve the proposed repeal and changes to SDC 21.06.040 Development Standards and 21.09.020 Hearing Examiner Rules, which again is consistent with the exhibit draft code amendments that are included as Exhibit One of the packet this evening. We have received public comment on this proposal leading up to the, prior to this evening and shortly after the work session with council, we in total had received five written comments from two separate citizens. These are included as Exhibits Three and Five of the packet. I will note that during our SEPA comment period, which is a 14-day comment period, which closed on May 2nd at 5:00 PM, we did not receive any comments in regards to the SEPA determination for this code change. We have, as of June 2nd to present day, received an additional 56 citizen comments and three that are included as Exhibit Seven. These were all submitted through our JOT form, which is a form that we use to receive SEPA comments. So that form was utilized after the close of the comment period in relation to SEPA. However, the project is still very much being discussed and available for public comment. So I just wanted to clarify that those comments are still very valid and a part of the record. They just are not pertinent to the SEPA decision itself. And then we received three additional comments, which the city clerk has provided to council prior to the start of this hearing this evening. So in regards to the legislative process and how we got to this evening, again, we had the Planning Commission combined work session and public hearing on March 17th. We followed the process and notified the Department of Commerce on March 28th of our 60-day notice of intent to adopt. April 18th, we issued our SEPA determination of nonsignificance, and May 2nd, that comment period ended with no comments received. May 3rd, we conducted the work session with city council, and here we are this evening with the public hearing. With that, that concludes staff's presentation for this evening. Ask if you have any questions of staff, and recommend you move forward with the public hearing. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute, and I was talking. Lindsay, if you can minimize your presentation, that way the public, and then the public can see the council as well. Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions of staff before we open the public hearing, and then we can deliberate? I have a question, and I thought I had found it, but I was scrolling through my packet to attempt to find it. And sorry, counsel, every time I jump into my packet, my, I think my camera goes away for a second. So within the confines of the packet, and David, you provided this in an email yesterday as I was trying to understand the, the state, the standard of service for elementary students. Where are those numbers derived from? Is that the state? Is the state saying grades K through 1 have to have a 20-to-1 ratio?
So my understanding is that those are determined by the school districts themselves based on the program needs. Each of the school district's capital facilities plans includes a statement in the section related to the, the standard of service that that is derived under the GMA, and under, there's a King County Code section that is provided. So my understanding is that each jurisdiction, school, each school district is given the responsibility of determining its own standard of service based on the programs and needs of that district.
Gotcha. Okay. I thought I remembered something through the state that was mandating classroom sizes.
I believe there is something on the Office of Public Instruction that, that relates to elementary school classroom sizes. That's the limit of my knowledge in this area. It's not something that I routinely practice in, so I apologize for that.
No worries. Okay, so if there are not any other questions, oh, no, Karen, Councilmember Howell.
I have a quick question around SEPA. Has the city ever used SEPA in terms of using it as a tool to advantage the city in terms of concurrency with schools?
So the city has not with schools that I'm aware of. However, there have been projects prior to the city's incorporation and projects in the county where I'm aware that SEPA has been used for various infrastructure issues. One, one such project is the Laurel subdivision in the city, where that project was being built. There were concerns around transportation and historic, historic resources and other things, and actually required, it resulted in a determination of significance being issued and an environmental impact statement being done. The project was redesigned to incorporate some mitigative measures and proceeded ahead. It, it just took a little longer to get to the final goal, and the design was a little bit different.
Because it would appear that SEPA would be the more appropriate tool in order to actually do something if we wanted to enact a slowdown or a rethinking, for example, of a, of a school structure or facility. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, however, that would require that the school district would identify to us that there is inadequate capacity. Or if we heard from many residents in that neighborhood that there was overcrowding in the schools and that they were in excess of their reported standard of service, then we would work on that and research that with the school districts and try to understand what exactly was going on in that specific school. However, in all instances, it would require close coordination with the school district as the standard of service is their standard of service, not the city's.
Correct. So I have one more question around standard of service to a certain extent. Well, actually, not so much. It's really more around our relationship with the school districts in terms of this working well for all parties, children, the city, the school districts. It requires close communication, I would assume, and it looks like through the, through the format that was just shown to us, the three-year process, when working through a concurrency type of an issue, that it does require that we're in close contact with the school district and that we're, that we are sharing information. And I believe there's a date coming up in June where we would be talking to them again. Is that correct?
That would be under the PF 19 or I think PF 25 now, 22, whatever it's changed to, the new countywide planning policies, where we would work with them and talk about forecasting development, talking about better coordinating and communicating. So in addition to that, that chronology that was shown, the graphic that was shown shows the different steps in the development review process. The coordination with the school districts actually starts quite a bit earlier than that in that we work with them to make sure they have a comprehensive understanding of our land use maps that are zoning, and they understand the rate of potential redevelopment and development in the city. So long as those assumptions hold true, then their capital facilities plans hold true. Where we want to make sure we're properly communicating with the school districts is where we start to see those assumptions not holding true. So if we see development coming in faster than we thought it would, or slower than we thought it would, then what was discussed as part of the PF 22 meetings, we would want to make sure to be in regular and open communication with the school districts so that they understand the rate of development in real time, which is why we've made sure to fine-tune that process. When we see an applicant come in the door with an idea, when they actually come in with a pre-application, which is before they've even filed a formal application, we are now notifying and coordinating with the school districts so that they understand that that is on the horizon and that they can start to put the wheels in motion if they need to, to make adjustments in order to ensure that their standard of service is being met.
Can you characterize how successful this process has been so far?
To date, so we, we started this process refinement about two years ago when this was brought to our attention. We received some comments from, from citizens that we had this section of code, why wasn't the city using it? We dug into it, trying to understand it better, and we feel that our communication has exponentially improved with the school districts. And we are now making sure that we're transmitting this information properly, and they have also included us on some of their committees. I sat myself on the Issaquah School, or excuse me, Lake Washington School District Facilities Advisory Committee with, with, with parents from Summamish, teachers from Summamish, as well as other cities.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I'd like to acknowledge that we did get a lot of letters, as we saw in the presentation, like 59. I read them all, and I share like all the parents' concerns about the quality of their kids' education. And I moved here because of the schools, and my two boys, they went through the Issaquah School District, you know, all 12 years. But I do want to say that, for me, that school class size is just one part of the equation of a high-quality education. And, you know, having great teachers is also very important. And we don't have housing for our teachers. And when we talk about concurrency, we're limiting the diverse housing for our teachers. And so our teachers now, a lot of them, especially the entry-level teachers, they're living in the neighboring towns. They're commuting here from Duval or Black Diamond or Covington or wherever. And as soon as they get, you know, something closer in their district, they're going to leave here. And so then what happens to our school district? Well, you know, we're losing our talented teachers. And so there goes the quality of our schools, and that is something we should be concerned about.
Councilmember Lamb, I hate to interrupt you, but I think this is our time for asking questions of staff, and we can go and have our deliberation after we open the public hearing, if that's okay.
Okay. It's fine.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Moran, did you have a question?
I did. It's more of a confirmation, Dave. David, I just wanted to confirm that the city is bound under WAC 365196840, if that's correct, and also King County Code 21A061225. One is the concurrency code. And the other is King County for school concurrency. And don't we have to work within those boundaries?
So I'd have to pull up that section of the WAC, if you could bear with me. And if you could repeat that, that'd be great.
Because the WAC 365196840 is concurrency and its purpose, and it states really clearly that is, that it is our job to make sure that we, it is the city's job to make sure that we are working in our job to make sure that we keep concurrency in the schools. They put that onto the city. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are bound by that WAC.
I can read it. It's in one of the public comments. If needed, David. So technically, it's in our packet.
I'm looking at the section in its entirety. It's quite lengthy here, so bear with me.
So I can read the section that was quoted, which was, it says parentheses 2, determining the public facilities subject to concurrency. Says concurrency is required for locally-owned transportation facilities and for transportation facilities of statewide significance that serve counties consisting of islands whose only connection to the mainland are state highways or ferry routes. This is the significant part. Counties and cities may adopt a concurrency mechanism for other facilities that are deemed necessary for development. I think Section 3, letter D, is also significant where it says counties and cities should coordinate with and reach agreements with other affected purveyors or survey, service providers when establishing level of service standards for facilities or services provided by others. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It does.
Councilmember Moran?
It does. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. My first question, sorry, let me get back to that. So my first question is, you know, in reading through all of this, David, I, I feel like, and I want to confirm, that this code change isn't actually removing school concurrency from the process of applying for permits for, you know, whatever size development would qualify for that. It's really that we're making the code more consistent so that that responsibility falls to the school districts because they are required as part of the state law, right, to make sure that, that they do provide adequate facilities. Would that be an accurate statement? And again, I don't know if that's to you, David, or to you, Carrie. But that was the sense I got, is that it's not that we're removing school concurrency from the equation, we're just making sure that it's clear that that is the jurisdiction of and the responsibility of the schools and, I guess, to some extent, the state since they provide the fund, some of the funding.
I was going to defer to Director Pyle to take the first pass at answering that, but I'm happy to weigh in if, if you want me to go first. It's up to you.
Sure, if you want to.
So I do think that there's a shared responsibility with regard to concurrency. I think that the presentation that Ms. Channing provided talked about other tools that the city has because we do have an obligation regarding concurrency with respect to schools, and it's in partnership with the schools.
And again, so when you say, just to get clarification, so again, we're not, by modifying this code, we're not, we're not shirking our responsibility. We're simply trying to streamline it and make the process clear so that we can, in fact, meet that responsibility. Is that kind of how, am I interpreting this correctly?
So we are literally removing the concurrency requirement from the code. However, that concurrency requirement, I believe, was a red herring because we don't own the schools, we don't run the schools, we can't certify that there is or is not capacity in the schools. Different than our roads, where we run the roads, where we operate the roads, and we can certify whether there is or is not capacity in the roads. If the city owned the schools, we could do that. And there are cities that do own the school districts, so they can do that. However, because we share district, we share schools with other cities, it becomes inherently complicated. And because the district operates across political boundaries, they have shared resources that they have to allocate. So what we're doing here is we're removing, literally removing, the concurrency certificate requirement where the city would, would issue a certificate of capacity. And we are in favor of enhanced communication with the district where they are able to give us feedback to tell us if there is or is not capacity in the school, in the school district. And if there is not capacity in the district, then what they would do, what we would do is we would issue a determination of significance or a mitigated determination of non-significance under SEPA that would allow us to phase the project, change the project, collect an impact fee of a different type or additional financial contribution towards school improvement, something along those lines. The issue that we have is that the cities, the existing concurrency code that's in the code is, as I said, a red herring. It is not something we have control over. So for us to be issuing a concurrency certificate is misleading as to what we're actually doing because we are simply asking the district, do you have capacity? That's all the code requires, is it asks us to check with the district if they have capacity, to look at the capital facilities plan and see if the capital facilities plan indicates there is capacity. And if the answer is yes, then they are given a certificate of concurrency.
Okay. That was very thorough answer, and I just want to make sure that I understand it and that for anybody, you know, at home and the two folks who are here and sticking out with us, thank you, understood all of what you said. And again, I want to, I want to also say, like, I think I'm the only council member who actually has a child in public school here in Summamish.
Point of order.
State your point.
Yeah, we don't need to hear about personal narratives at this time. Thank you. It's about questions.
Counsel, yes, let's maintain just questions for staff right now because what we need to do is get to the public hearing and open that public hearing. So if you have a question for staff, let's tackle those, and then we can do our deliberations after we open the public hearing and hear from the public.
Excellent. So to reiterate, David, to make sure I understood, again, while we are removing a chunk of code that talks about the city issuing a school concurrency certificate, which, if we followed that code, wouldn't achieve, in your opinion, and based on the last two years of exercising this process, would not achieve as good of an outcome or as thorough of an outcome of assessing the school's capacity and ensuring that we actually have a method in place to, to work with the schools to make sure there's capacity and to potentially have some mitigation options if there isn't capacity. So I don't even think I summarized that. We're trying to replace what's there with something better to actually achieve better results and have more authority collectively with the school districts in terms of ensuring we have capacity to support any new development coming online. Would that be an accurate statement?
That would be accurate. We are trying to improve our coordination to ensure that their classroom space is available and classroom resources are available when new students are added to the district enrollment. The only difference would be is if the city actually had a standard of service that was codified. So if we had a standard of service that was codified, we would have a role in determining school concurrency. But because we are not the ones that set the standard of service, it is misleading for us to be in the role of issuing a certificate of concurrency or determining whether or not there is adequate space available. That is up to the school districts who set the standard of service to do.
Got it. And so, again, just to clarify, so where you say, you know, we don't have a standard of service codified, it's not because we're choosing not to, and this, Carrie, might be a question for you. It's because that particular assessment and that particular responsibility of setting that standard of service goes to the school districts. And so, again, it's our job to partner with them and make sure that we're working with them, but we don't actually have, I'm asking the question of the attorney.
Councilmember Trin, your mic's not on, so I can't hear you.
Point of order.
State your point.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. She's doing a lot of pontificating, and there's no question that seems to be in the near future.
I was literally in the middle of my question.
If she could get to the question, it would be really nice. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart, please get to your question.
I was literally in the middle of my question.
Okay, go ahead. Let's just keep going. Question, though.
Well, now I'm trying to get back my train of thought. So do we have the authority? So as David stated, we don't have a codified level of service for schools. And I want to clarify if, in fact, we would even have the legal authority to set a level of service for schools, or does that legal authority live with the school districts?
It lives with the state.
With the state. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Trin?
David, by the removal of this concurrency certificate, are we removing a tool that would manage growth?
The, I'm trying to think of the best way to explain this.
In its current state.
From my perspective, in its current state, no. Because the determination as to whether or not there is adequate school capacity always falls back on the school district. So for that reason, the school district is always going to manage its resources to accommodate school capacity with new growth coming online.
So then the second, so then the second question is, do we have the capability or should we leave the ordinance in place until we replace it with a better tool? Or do we just remove it and then work to replace it with a better tool? Or we would have the option to do nothing? So that's for discussion and debate, but would we have the ability to sharpen the tool in a sense, make a better tool, by leaving it in first? Or do we take it out? And then, in your professional opinion, which avenue would you take? Thank you.
So you would have the ability to amend the current section to incorporate the feedback loop that we've included. However, I still believe that the city being put in the position of issuing a certificate of school capacity, school concurrency, is not the city's role because we're not the one managing that resource.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Mayor.
Councilmember Moran?
Okay, David, back to WAC 365196840. It does allow for the city to set its own level of service. And as a matter of fact, it's almost written as if it assumes that the city is going to, is going to set its own level of service, is the way that it's almost written. So the interesting thing about it is that, is that it allows for, and I'm just going to read it from, directly from it. Cities should coordinate with and reach agreements with other providers, meaning the schools, when establishing the level of service standards for their services. So we, when they, we should be working with them to set what we think should be the level of service. And that doesn't happen. The point I'm trying to say is, when we go through this and we're going to say we do not want this in here, what is going to replace it? Can you tell me in our code? This is, this is a WAC that we're just going to say we're not going to follow, but where else is this in our code that is going to replace it?
So my understanding is that this WAC does give the city the ability to manage a program for school concurrency. It says, I believe it says may, cities may. I believe that was under item 2. Counties and cities may adopt, may adopt a concurrency mechanism for other facilities that are deemed necessary for development. So you could determine that schools are necessary for development and thereby develop a program concurrency mechanism. The issue that we're struggling with is that we're in a position of determining whether or not a school has capacity, a school district has capacity, and whether schools are concurrent with development, but we're not the ones managing that resource. Further, the school district boundaries extend beyond the city's boundaries and into other cities and counties, and county, and the county, correction. And the, the issue there is that if the city was to set a concurrency standard that was different from what the other cities from what the other cities were experiencing, then there would be an equity issue.
I agree with that, but there's no reason that we shouldn't write an ordinance or write something that basically says that they have to follow their own that they have listed. So it seemed to me like what we should be saying is that we write an ordinance saying that we are going to pass an ordinance saying that we want them to follow their own that they have listed. And so when we send them a letter that, you know, that they have, you know, that they have put into their, what is it, their capital facilities plan, when we send them a letter, it's not a, "Hey, would you put it back?" You have to put it back. And does it fall into your capital facilities plan? So that's the problem I'm having.
So, Councilmember Moran, I just want to make sure that we're siloing questions here and then deliberation because I think we're falling more into the deliberation part. I want to get to the public hearing.
Okay. So the question I have is, is there anything, anyplace else, that is going to replace? I mean, granted, what we have is not good, but there's nothing else there. I mean, I'm not seeing it. Am I missing it?
There is no other direct replacement section. However, the sections that Ms. Channing pointed out in her presentation do exist and do give us the ability to work on school capacity. So it is an element to the environment under SEPA, and we would be able to issue a determination of significance and require an EIS be done if there was evidence that there is inadequate school capacity. The biggest challenge, as I see it, is that there is a desire on the part of the community to want to ensure that there is capacity in the neighborhood schools. However, the way the school districts' capital facilities plans are written is they look at the district as a whole, and they do recognize that there is a priority in maintaining access to local schools, the neighborhood schools. However, one of the tools that they cite in resource planning is the ability to move students from school to school in order to ensure that the capacity is spread across the district, or I guess the demand for school services is spread across the district to even out capacity. So the issue here is that you might see development come into one neighborhood that, where there is already a school that is full, and the concern that you might see in comment is that it's going to overwhelm the school, the school's already at capacity, the resource in that school is spread thin. However, from the district perspective, they're balancing the school services across the entire district. So they don't see it as that school being at capacity. They look at the spreadsheet of all of their capacity across all of the schools in the district, and they look at what mechanisms they have that first prioritize placement of portables on the site, for example, or the modification of multi-use space, for example, or other types of programs that they could suspend for that year while that census population moves through the school, that they could restore later. But if they can't add enough capacity through those mechanisms, then they look at moving students to other schools. And from the school district's perspective, that is meeting their service obligation. So I think it's really important for the community, for anybody listening, it's really important to understand the difference between planning for school services across an entire district versus planning for school services at an individual neighborhood school.
I think parents just want to know upfront versus being told two weeks before school starts.
So if there aren't any more questions for staff, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm also mindful of the fact that it's 9:47, so, Madam City Clerk, I don't know how many people there are waiting for the public hearings, and I realize you may have to ask them.
Madam Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock. Let's just nip this.
Thank you. I'll second that. All right. So we have a motion to extend to 11 p.m. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of 6-1, we are extended to 11. Okay, so let's go ahead and queue up whoever is here for this particular hearing. And I realize we may have to cycle through if people are waiting for one of the other hearings, but...
We don't have anybody.
No one? Okay.
Okay.
There's literally no one to give public comment?
Well, we have, Madam Mayor, we have no one who signed up for in-person, but I will ask for the online attendees.
Perfect. Thank you.
If anyone in attendance in the room would like to comment? Okay, we do have one in-person commenter.
Okay.
And please state your name and your city of residence for the record to begin. Thank you.
So the mic is not working up at the podium.
There, the green light?
Now we got it.
I just, I don't speak very often, and I am just driven to have to comment on this one tonight. I support the staff's recommendation in the presentation to work with the school district on collaborative code amendments. What I don't understand is why we have to repeal the code that's on the books right now, no matter how inept it is, while we work on that collaboration. Because the fact is, once it's repealed, it's forgotten. It won't get done. That's just the reality. There are so many things on our plate. So I don't understand why we have to repeal it in order to work to improve it. That work to improve it would have been time better spent over the last six months than work on figuring out how to repeal it, frankly. Even though the district, the school district, has the primary responsibility for schools, the level of service and the designation of a concurrency requirement, it has to do with the pace of development, not necessarily with when a school is opened. And I think it's really important that we distinguish between the level of service and a concurrency requirement. We're not trying to stop development. We're trying to ensure that the schools, that the pace of the development that takes place is accompanied with appropriate infrastructure. That is the requirement of the Growth Management Act. And I get that the SEPA tools could be used, but frankly, it's hard to imagine a development that would result in a determination of significance on schools. So I don't see, I don't think it's a practical matter, it's probably why we haven't seen it used. I just don't think that would ever get used, even though it's possible. So for me, to me, this is really just another example of our newly-elected and appointed council members unwinding the most minimal regulation that could be used to manage development in this city. Balancing growth while protecting the natural environment. Protect our environment through strict enforcement of Tree Canopy Code. Develop solutions through community engagement. An advocate for our environment. Want the city to remain an incredible place to live, work, and raise a family. Bring our Samamish values and priorities to the council. Working to reduce traffic congestion. Focus on maintaining quality of life, safety, and our environment. Do you recognize those statements? Those are taken from the voter pamphlet. These are all quotes. So far, I'm just not seeing much evidence of respect for the quality of life issues in the decisions being made by this divided council. Rejecting the repeal of this section is a simple matter. It doesn't negatively impact housing development or anything else. I ask that you retain the concurrency language in the code and then work and collaborate with the school districts to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the online attendees, if you wish to provide a public hearing comment, please raise your hand. For attendees joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star 9. I see two commenters so far. Again, please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in. For the record, I will now promote the first commenter.
Okay, I'm calling in for public comment with regard to school concurrency. And at the risk of kind of being redundant to a lot of the dialogue that's already occurred in comments that others have made, I still wanted to speak because I think that I offer at least something a little bit more to consider. One, I noticed that in the presentation and the way that you're referring to this code as a body is school concurrency, but on the agenda and in the materials that have been posted online and such with regard to this public hearing, school concurrency is not in the title. It's nowhere. In fact, you have to dig through it to find the word "school concurrency." And I think that that's a big transparency, big gaffe. And on that note, I would ask that this either gets extended while you guys do work on a better solution than just, like, ripping this out and getting it out so that people aren't finding out just by word of mouth. Because I think that a lot of those letters that you guys got in were probably word of mouth. But that's just a suspicion, so please consider that. Also, I've seen conflicting evidence on school classrooms being overcrowded and how much that impacts education. But one thing that is true across the board is that when there are disciplinary issues, they are quite distracting. Just recently, I think it was last week, ISD just pulled funding from something that they got in a levy for mental health professionals. I mean, it's waxed. They kept one person at the district. They're losing all of this talent, and yet we want to pull school concurrency, which is our only safeguard, when we're having big concerns about mental health and wellness amongst our students. We're putting more pressure on teachers, and in that, we have a lot of safety and security issues. You know, there's legislation happening in Minnesota right now about, you know, how much can a teacher defend themselves when a child acts up in school? So, you know, these are, there are behavioral issues, there are safety issues in overcrowding of the classrooms themselves and the portables for evacuations, active shooter, which is like a real reality you need to think about. So I'm just asking you guys to reconsider pulling this before letting the public understand what's happening and potentially working together to see how we can make all parties feel satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now promote the second commenter. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening. My name, Paul Stickney, Samamish. Talking about school concurrency, I've got some facts and information to add in support of a statement that I think that cities need to determine their desired land uses, let school districts know what their plans are, and collaborate to ensure that there's adequate, sufficient, and even exemplary school solutions in a community. Here's a couple interesting facts. Of the 22,500 homes in Seattle, excuse me, in Samamish, about 85% of them were allowed by King County and 15% by our city. However, the reason we've seen so many students is at the time of incorporation in '99, there were roughly 3,000 single-family homes in the King County Development Pipeline. That's a lot of houses. Samamish has built another 3,000 approximately from '99 until 2021. That is 6,000 houses. On the data I have now, I only believe we have about 300 single-family homes in our pipeline. I'm not counting Town Center at this time. I'm talking single-family homes. There's been a lot of chatter on Facebook, but not a lot of solutions offered. I'd like to talk about something. Single-family demand, multifamily has less demand, future demographics, and, you know, doubling up. Let me talk about each of these. I think that the single-family homes that we have in play over the next few years are going to be far less than we've seen in the last 20 years. In general, multifamily housing that are two-bedroom units or less have far fewer students. Townhouses have more. Single-family homes have even more. Our cities' demographics are changing. I heard a stat from Isiqua a couple years ago that Trossix, when it was first built, had roughly two students per house, and now it's down to about one. We should be studying, as neighborhoods age, what happens. And my comment regarding doubling up, Lake Washington School District is mostly single-level elementary schools. As schools get rebuilt, there's capacity to go to two-story to solve most of the problems. And as many of you are aware, but the general public may not be, the Lake Washington School District owns a 12-acre site in Town Center. Yes, it's got some wetlands on it, but they've talked about in the past schools and workforce housing. So there's quite a few solutions through land use management and student generation and solutions we have right here to improve classroom size, improve outcomes, and get land uses that our community desires over a cycle of life. Appreciate the opportunity for the comment.
Thank you.
We do have a third, I'm sorry, we do have a third commenter. Thank you. I will now promote the third caller.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Hi, my name is Gaia, and I am a parent with two kids in Samamish, in the public schools. I think the one thing that I would like to kind of say is, Samamish is kind of interesting because we have two different school districts, and they both have very different approaches to how they kind of use the money towards what they use the money, whether they want to open new schools or new kinds of programs. So that said, I think it's been very interesting understanding what this change is about. And as a citizen of Samamish, I'm trying to kind of figure out what the real impact is for my kids. Will they get bused to other schools? Will they get to stay in the same school? Will they have to attend a different school district? You know, these are the things that I think citizens can use help with in understanding how this court change is going to affect them. Being, I mean, it's kind of good to know that the city really doesn't have any control over the decisions that a school district ultimately makes. But what I'm trying to understand is, can a school district ever say that we cannot accommodate more students in this particular school and we'll have to bus them out? Is this something that citizens have a say in? Right? And that is what I think everybody wants to know. We kind of understand that the city wants to work in a way that is clear and ambiguous for them, but ultimately, it is the parents who want to know which schools their kids are going to go to. And that should be the one that basically drives the decision. What citizens want for their kids? And is it convenient for them? Like, you can't expect kids who are living in Samamish to be bused to a school in Redmond so that they can stay in the same school district. Or will they be going to a different school? Or will they be going to a different school district? Because there is no space for their kids in that school district or in that particular school. So what does this mean in the long term? I think that's what people are trying to understand. Thank you.
Gaia, this is the management analyst commenting. Could you, could you please spell your last name for the record for the minutes?
My last name is Subramonian, S-S-N-S-A-M. U-B-R-A-M-O-N-I-E-N.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Mayor, I don't see any additional commenters. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, Councilor indulge me in just a few comments here. So first, the, the WAC gives us the ability to ask if the schools have capacity. If they say yes, it's on the schools. If we don't ask, it's on us. They'll never say there's not capacity because of the paramount duty, so they're always going to say yes. But one thing that I wrote down, and I think Councilmember Moran touched on it briefly, and it was David Pyle that says, "We don't have any code for their standard of service." But if we were to adopt a reference to their service, their standard of service, it's in their capital facilities plan, so we don't have to change it all the time, you just reference their capital facilities plans. But here's the problem. What we saw in our packet was an example from the Lake Washington School District. And what it says is kindergarten through first grade should have a 20-to-1 ratio. That's 20 students and one teacher. Yesterday, I was in a Samamish elementary school in a first-grade classroom, and the teacher told me she had 28 students in her class last year. I said, "But you had an aide, right?" No, she did not have an aide. 28 first graders. They are not meeting their standards of service that they have set. If we don't ask, if they're not setting their level, their standard of service, if they're not meeting it, again, it's on us. I think we had some great public comment tonight. And I think I, I've certainly had an about-face on this, but I, that teacher yesterday really drove home for me that they're not meeting their standard of service. And if we keep putting more kids into the classrooms and they can't meet their standards of service, technically, it's a catch-22. And I recognize that, because the only way that the schools can add capacity is to run a capital bond and have the voters say yes. But the reality is, is it's very difficult for teachers. She told me she thought about quitting last year. Quitting. Not because she, she lived here, by the way, in Samamish. She's since moved, but she lived in Samamish. And she thought about quitting, because 28 first graders is too many students for one teacher and no aide. So I, I think, given, you know, our community's input on this and the fact that we do have the ability to do this, and I think a reference to their capital facilities plans and their standard of service, let the onus be on the schools to meet their own burden. But I think we need to at least have the due diligence, ask the question, is, are you meeting your standard of service? Because right now, it looks like the answer is no. And it is hard to get a good education. It's not just about the numbers in the classroom, it's about the teachers being able to teach their students. And it is very challenging to teach 28 first graders. Those are six-year-olds, got a lot of energy. So I'm opposed to repealing this. And I got a lot of hands up now. Okay, Councilmember Moran.
Well, I want to make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion that we retain the concurrency code and have staff work with both districts and take comments from both the public and the council and come back with a better ordinance and somehow work in that reference of both of the districts' tables that they have for, pardon?
Capital facilities plans.
Yes, from their capital facilities plans of their level of service. And just taking in all the public comment and, but come back after working with the districts and bring something back.
So I'll second your motion, but I do want to ask our city attorney if we can do this midstream in a public hearing.
I think you can do it because the notice of the public hearing encompassed the topic of school concurrency generally, and this is within that topic. So I do believe there's been adequate notice and the opportunity for participation by the public, which is the whole intent of a public hearing. So yes, I think you can proceed.
So the motion's been made, and it has been seconded. So Councilmember Moran, did you want to speak to your motion now?
And could you repeat your motion, Councilmember Moran, just so we have clarity? Thanks.
Okay, it's a motion to retain the concurrency code and have staff work with both districts and to take comments from the public that they have sent in and from the council from tonight's meeting, and come back with a better ordinance and referencing both districts.
All three, we have three. Just to be clear.
That's true. We have three districts. And referencing their facilities plans and their level of, their level of service that they have. And the reason behind that for me is, from somebody who works in those schools, is, for me, it is ultimately, I think that parents want to know. Parents, not only do you, parents buy here, they buy here for the schools, parents want to know. They are fully aware that, you know what, I know that the school district is going to tell you they can take every child. But when I'm looking at, and I look at, when, when we are bound here and we are bound by the WAC and we are bound by what is written for King County, King County is pretty clear that the district standard of service shall not be adjusted for any portion of the classrooms housed in relocatable facilities and not in portables. And we've got, and you go, you look at some of our schools and you look at their numbers, and we've got two of them in particular, Blackwell last, last year, at 12% of it was in portables. Carson, 17% was in portables. You know, I think we need to look at that.
Okay, so we are now, the comments are limited to the motion that's on the floor. So, Councilmember Lamb. Okay, Councilmember Howe. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'd actually like to propose an amendment to the, to the motion that's on the floor. And I, and actually, may I ask a question first pertinent to the motion and then potentially propose an amendment?
Yep, go ahead.
So my question is, do we, as I understood it in the, in the packet, that the, the code as it's written today potentially creates a legal conundrum of sorts? Is there, is there risk of us taking this time? Like, is there, is there some sort of a, an urgency to us making a decision about this now, or can we?
In my opinion, the risk is quite low. This language has been, it was inherited from King County prior to incorporation, it's been in the city's code since incorporation, is that correct, Director Pyle? And there's been no challenge to date that I'm aware of, so I think the risk is relatively low based on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I'd like to propose an amendment. I, Councilmember Moran, I actually really like your proposal that we, that we kind of leave it as is and we direct the city manager to have staff, our staff work with the school districts to come up with something. My amendment would be to actually remove the part that talks about the reference to the capital facilities tables, only to just not be so directive, but to just direct that the staff go and, and work with the school districts and the legal teams to come back with something and not be directive about what it does or does not include. So my amendment would be to remove the reference to the facilities and capital improvement plans. From your motion.
Second.
So again, just to, to speak to the, to the amendment.
So the amendment has been seconded, so yes, Councilmember Stewart.
So again, I fully support leaving the code as is and having our staff and legal councils go to explore potential ways to handle this if there's something else we can do. I think that's great. I just don't want us to be directive about what it, it should or should not include at this time. I want to kind of let them go figure that out, and we can certainly recommend that, we could certainly do that, but I wouldn't support a motion that is that directive. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart, I'm sorry, can I get clarification on, you're saying, is that exact language, capital facilities tables? Is that what it says?
Well, I, I didn't, I couldn't write down fast enough, but I believe the motion was to retain the code as it is today, to direct the city manager to have our staff work with the school districts, and to have, whatever comes back, have a reference, I think it said, to the-
So the code, yeah, I, I've got it here. It's, it's, it's a reference to their capital, capital facilities plans for their standard of service.
Right. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that. What I'm opposed to is if our direction is to have staff go work together and come back with something, I don't want the motion to be that prescriptive. I, I want to, we could certainly throw that out as something we, we would like to have them consider, but I don't think the motion, if we're telling them to go figure it out, it should be just that and leave it at that and not be prescriptive about how, requiring it to contain something at this time.
Councilmember Trin.
Yeah, for clarifications on this amendment, is capital facilities, is it "and" level of service, or is it capital facilities with level of service? So is that one thing, or if it's two things? Because then the amendment would need to be for both or for just one.
So I can tell you, Councilmember Trin, that it's, it's called a standard of service, is what the districts call it. And the standard of service is embedded in their capital facilities plans. That helps.
So it's considered one thing?
Yes, so their, their standard of service prescribes how many students-per-teacher ratio in the elementary school and middle and high school. Okay, so I'm, I'm actually opposed to the amendment because I think the amendment is, it's a circular reference, so if the districts go and change what their, because we're, we're not trying to take away the work that they want to do, right? They are prescribing what their standard of service is. We're not telling them how many students they should have. We're just saying, whatever you say is the right prescription for student-teacher ratio, we're just going to adopt that by reference in our code. We're not going to adopt, like, you know, 20-to-1 for K through 1. That's not what I'm saying we do. And, you know, I think what we should do is the reference so that if, as they change it, or if they change it on an annual basis, we don't have to then go and change our code every year to keep up with them, we just reference their capital facilities plan. So I think this does put the ball in their court. We're just saying you need to meet your standard. Otherwise, why have this standard? So I'm not supportive of the amendment. Councilmember Stewart.
Then I'm confused, because the first part of the motion is to direct, well, the second part, is to direct staff to go, our staff, to go work with the school districts and to come up with something better. Right? And then, right? And then it says to have a reference to their standard of service from their capital facilities plan. And I'm saying that I am supportive of directing staff to go work out what the best way to make this happen is. I'm not supportive of being prescriptive about what that solution is at this time. So to me, those two things can't go together. You can't tell staff, "Go figure it out," and then tell them what the answer is. It's, you either got to tell them to go figure it out or give them what you want to support.
Excuse me, Council, if I may, just while you're talking about the motion, under a council manager plan of government, it is technically not appropriate for the council to direct staff. You can direct the city manager, who can direct staff. So just a point of, a technical point, thank you.
Okay, so I don't see any more hands up, so we are currently entertaining the amendment, which is to remove the reference to the capital facilities plans for their standard of service. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, Councilmember Trin, I didn't hear you vote either way, so I don't know if you voted. Nay. Okay, so I think that was a four-three. Okay, so now we are at the main motion as amended, so it's basically to return, retain our concurrency code and direct the city manager to go work with the districts for something better. So are there comments on the main motion as amended? I've got a comment. I think it really defeats the purpose. I mean, I'm, I'm somewhat now reluctant to support the motion. I want to, although I will because I think we need to retain our concurrency code, but working, you know, directing our staff who's already so busy doing things to go and work with the district, when the district is already saying what their standard of service is, I just don't understand why we're trying to reinvent a wheel that doesn't need reinventing. So. Councilmember Moran.
Well, it, it does, I'm, I mean, first of all, they may come back and, and state that, you know, we already have this in our plan and this is what we worked towards, so they may come back with that. But there's other things that they could look at. They could look at the portables, they could look to meet what it says on portables, they could look at the fact that, you know, King County code, you know, it'd be nice for them to actually read that and do what it says about portables. So there's a lot of other things they could have addressed that is actually written in the 21A061225 and in the WAC, and they could address those.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so I really appreciate Councilmember Moran making this motion, because I was thinking of a similar motion, and what I wasn't able to say previously is, I am, I think, currently the only council member who has a child in public schools here in Samamish. And I obviously share the concerns about the increased demands on our schools. I deeply am concerned about our teachers. The last couple of years, teaching through a pandemic and a hybrid, coming back to school with a pandemic, it's a lot. And so I think it's really important that we, we look at this holistically. One of the things that happened when I first joined council was we used to have joint meetings with the Lake Washington and Issaquah, Issaquah School Districts, not so much with Snoqualmie Valley, it's a smaller part of our city, but that was, those collaborative sessions were invaluable. So just as a, as an idea, I think, you know, reinstating those meetings, I think, would be really important so that we can be working with our school districts to find solutions. So I like the idea of putting this out there in a more open-ended way. I think to Councilmember Moran's comments, there could be other things, like maybe the code changes just that we state we have to follow this process, right? And that we solidify the process that the staff is already using as part of our code, and that may be a way to address this. I think there are a lot of ways to do this, and I think turning to our staff, or to our city manager to have the appropriate people work on this and, and making sure that we get legal opinions, both from our city attorney and from the school district attorneys, is important. I really want to read this in to address some of the public comments we received, is the paramount duty, right? "It is the paramount duty of the state to make ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders without distinction or preference on account of race, color, caste, or sex." And caste, the definition of that is "any class or group of people who inherit exclusive privileges or are perceived as socially distinct." I think it's really important because there were comments made, right? That whatever we implement, that we do it in a way to make sure that, that we aren't creating inequities across the school districts, because that will create other legal issues that while they may not be the city's problem, they will still be our residents' problem. And so I think it's really important, and to address some of the public comment, how do citizens have a say? Reach out to your state representatives. Part of the challenge that our schools have is they do not still have adequate funding to be able to cite and build more schools and to be able to hire enough teachers. So that would be my recommendation to the public who's listening, that that's where I think this, this solution has to start. Thanks.
Okay, I don't have any more hands raised, so we- Okay, I don't have any more hands raised. So we are voting on the main motion as amended, which is to retain our concurrency code and direct the city manager to work with all three of our districts on something better. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I think that was a seven oh oh. All right. So at this juncture, we have an open public hearing unless I close it. So is council okay if we close the public hearing?
I concur with you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Okay, so we are going to close the public hearing. All right.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If, this may be for the city attorney. If we're asking the city manager to kind of come back with something, would we just have a public, another public hearing later with whatever that other something was?
It's not required to have a public hearing. That seems overly formalistic, but it can be reported out in open session, of course, so the public's aware.
Okay, thank you.
And then, of course, if there's a code change, council would be voting on any code changes, so.
And that's correct. And not all code changes require a public hearing.
Okay, we've got another public hearing. It's 10:24. All right, this next public hearing is the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual and City Addendum. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Alagash, Audrey Starcy, and Stephanie Sullivan for this public hearing to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer this one to Audrey Starcy, our deputy director for the introduction. Audrey? As she comes on board and unmutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Audrey Starcy, Deputy Public Works Director. This evening, we plan to provide the public hearing for the updates to SDC 21.03.050 and the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual and City Addendum. Stephanie Sullivan, our Senior Stormwater Program Manager, will be presenting ahead of the hearing this evening and will be leading the discussion. We will also be joined by the city's consultant for this project, AHBLO. And from AHBLO, Wayne Carlson and Stephanie Hindmarch. Stephanie, I'll let you go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Audrey. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Stephanie Sullivan, Senior Stormwater Program Manager. I'm joined by Wayne Carlson and Stephanie Hindmarch of AHBLO, who will start off our presentation. I will conclude by presenting staff's recommendation and review potential amendments based on what we heard from council at our May 17th council meeting. We will have time for questions and request council make any additional comments or questions on this topic. So you can adopt these updates hopefully at the June 21st council meeting. After your questions, we ask that council hold the public hearing. So Stephanie Hindmarch or Wayne, if you want to go ahead and present. Perfect. And kick us off.
Great. Yeah, thank you for having us this evening. Next slide. So our presentation this evening, we will, we were, we were here on May 10th, so it'll be a bit of, just a refresher with respect to what we spoke about on May 10th for purposes of the public hearing. But we will quickly review the, the project goals, revisit the project schedule, discuss the planning commission's recommendation, changes between the planning commission recommendation and this evening based on our meeting with you on, on May 10th, summarize the draft motion and potential amendments, and then discuss next steps in the project. Next slide. So the, the project goals, as, as a reminder, that this whole project is being really performed under the auspices of the Federal Clean Water Act. And so as I indicated back in May, the Federal Clean Water Act is a technology-based piece of legislation, which, similar to the Clean Air Act, requires a standard that is continually evolving. The legal standard in the Clean Water Act is that stormwater be treated to the maximum extent practicable. And with that, the states, and Washington does this through the, through the NPDES permit that is issued by ecology under the Clean, under the Clean Water Act, but there is a municipal stormwater permit. And the city of Sammamish is covered under the Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit, which is for similarly sized communities everywhere from small cities up to fairly large communities. Phase One is only for the very largest cities and counties in this state, which would be Seattle, Tacoma, King Pierce, Snohomish Counties, and Clark County. Otherwise, everybody else in Washington State would be covered under either the Eastern or the Western Washington NPDES permit. These permits last for a period of five years, at which time they get renewed. And so when I talked about that, that concept of to the maximum extent practicable, the, the engineering standards associated with what is considered practical with respect to stormwater treatment and stormwater management changes essentially every five years. And so what we're here doing before you this evening is adopting the, the latest version, the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual, which the State Department of Ecology has deemed to be technically equivalent to its own manual, which meets that, that standard of the EPA under the, under the maximum extent practicable under the Clean Water Act. Along with that, we have some minor amendments to the city stormwater code and, and then some, also some minor amendments to the city of Sammamish's addendum to the King County Manual. And that is the addendum document which customizes the, the King County Surface Water Design Manual to reflect the specific characteristics of drainage and water sheds within the city. Next slide. So in terms of the, the project schedule, we began the project in January. We, there was a council briefing that we had with you in January. And then, over the course of February and March, we performed a gap or opportunity analysis to, to look at what needed to be changed within the codes related to the adoption of the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual. And in March, we summarized the findings, our findings in that gap analysis in, in the form of a virtual open house. Over the course of April and into, in, beginning in, in really in April and into May, we began the process of preparing draft code updates to the municipal code as well as the addendum, as well as targeted outreach. And we had some planning commission meetings. In May, we met with you, the city council. And then we are back before you today with, with respect to a public hearing. We issued SEPA back on June 6th, and the comment period for this, the SEPA Environmental Review associated with this non-project action will conclude on June 20th. Next slide.
Okay, so as you might remember, the planning commission's recommendation was to adopt 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual, the proposed Sammamish addendum, and proposed amendments to SDC 2103050 as presented during the planning commission public hearing, and to remove the exemption for golf courses in SDC 2103050G, which was pertaining to fertilizers containing phosphorus. Discuss that a little bit further in the upcoming slides. And the commission had also recommended that city council consider misdemeanors are the correct enforcement mechanism for instances of violations of the stormwater code. And there was some discussion on that at our last council meeting. The only new changes you'll see to the staff recommendation in your packet since the last meeting is one change under section 144, which was just replacing an acronym with ecology for clarity. That was based on a public comment received. We've also done some outreach to the golf courses. Again, there was the code regarding fertilizers containing phosphorus. There is an exemption currently in the code that allows golf courses to apply fertilizers containing phosphorus. Because of the requirements under state law, the staff is recommending that the council remove this exemption. Please note that the exemptions for establishing turf within a first year as well as applying fertilizer in order to increase phosphorus according to soil testing, those are still exemptions that staff is recommending keeping in the code. So we notified the golf courses of the proposed changes. We received some pretty detailed comments from Sahali. They use fertilizer containing phosphorus when establishing and repairing grass, and they do extensive soil testing on the grass in order to determine where and how much fertilizer containing phosphorus needs to be applied. They have emphasized to us that they're committed to environmental stewardship and that fertilizer containing phosphorus is crucial to their business. Because of the conditions that they are applying this fertilizer containing phosphorus, based on staff recommendation, they would still qualify for those exemptions for establishing new turf and adding phosphorus to the soil based on soil testing results. I believe they have also submitted some written public comment for this evening. With that, I'm going to hand it back over to Stephanie with the city to go through the recommended motion.
So staff does recommend adopting the proposed code updates, the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual, also known as KCSWDM, and Sammamish Addendum at the council meeting on June 21st. And as Wayne noted, tonight is reserved for the public hearing. And the determination of nonsignificance in accordance with the State Environmental Policy Act was posted yesterday, June 6th, and the two-week waiting period ends June 20th. And there is no administrative appeal for this action. So I'm going to walk through the recommended motion and possible amendments that council may be interested in making to staff's proposal at that future meeting. And the suggested motion on the screen is to adopt the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual, the proposed addendum, and the proposed amendments to SDC 2103050 as presented by staff at the June 7, 2022 city council public hearing in Exhibits 2 and 3. Next slide. So our first potential amendment would disallow the use of polyvinyl chloride, also known as PVC pipes, for stormwater management in private systems, which we heard is due to the concern of microplastics. I'm not an expert on pipe materials and plastic pollution, but I did try to learn more about these issues and how they intersect with stormwater management. Microplastics are released by plastic products, including pipes. PVC pipes are economical, readily available, and a standard material for stormwater and wastewater pipes. They have a useful life of 100 years, but in practice, it can be less. The pipes are buried underground and they are made to last a long time. Single-use plastic packaging is the primary source for secondary microplastics that are found in the environment. Studies on the release of microplastics from urban stormwater facilities are very scarce. Research organizations are still studying the production, fate, transport, and effects of microplastics on the environment and human health. So staff suggests at this time allowing the use of PVC pipes in private systems to manage stormwater, which is consistent with current practices and the King County Drainage Manual. Next slide. This amendment would restrict the use of eight-inch pipe in right-of-way and define those special cases to be for when internal pipes are in treatment systems internally and where those utility conflicts exist. However, staff suggests that the allowance as written in the proposed code is reasonable and would provide flexibility when needed, and the standard minimum size for pipes would remain as 12 inches. Next slide. This potential amendment would require that trees be placed in an adequate distance from stormwater facilities based on the root size and maturity and stipulates the trees allowed and the usements based on the city public works standards. We believe there may be some unintended consequences of implementing this requirement. And if a restriction on trees and drainage expenses is desired, we would suggest a study be conducted to understand those issues before adding this restriction. We all benefit from trees and want to keep them. We believe there are instances where trees are in drainage usements and they don't cause issues. The city is implementing the Urban Forest Management Plan, which was adopted in July 2021, and is another lens to view this issue. The goals of the Urban Forest Management Plan include maintaining canopy cover and assessing effectiveness of design, construction, development standards that apply to trees and planting sites. This effort is a good opportunity to further consider the intersection of trees and stormwater facilities. Also add that our city inspects stormwater facilities on regular intervals, and as part of the process, we identify possible tree roots that may impact our infrastructure. We also plan to begin a citywide pipe condition assessment, which will help flag potential tree issues for existing pipe systems. This information may inform whether additional policy is needed. Lastly, enforcement would be another issue that would need to be addressed for this kind of restriction. And staff suggests that the current site design review and stormwater inspection processes are adequate for addressing potential tree conflicts, and that additional information is needed so as not to create unintended consequences or harm our efforts in the Urban Forest Management Plan. Next slide. This is our last potential amendment, which talks about removing exceptions allowed by state law for applying turf fertilizer and limiting the application to only when soil testing shows it is required. Staff's proposal is to maintain the exceptions as allowed by state law while updating our code to comply. And I appreciated that the Sahali Golf Club came to make comment and appreciated their input. Next slide. So our next steps, we're looking, the SEPA comment period is open and will end on June 20th. And this is just a reminder, there's no administrative appeal, and we cannot take action until this period ends. So staff will return on June 21st, so council can consider adoption of these updates, which would comply with our NPDES permit requirements to make the changes effective by June 30th. Council may also choose at that time to make additional amendments to the updates proposed based on the additional input received through these efforts and your consideration. So tonight, we ask council hold the public hearing, and we'll come back June 21st. So with that, we can take some questions, and I'll hand it back to the mayor.
Thanks, Stephanie. If I can get you to minimize your screen so the public can see the council. Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just have one question. On the amendment that recommends removing the exemption to use fertilizer with phosphorus within the first year when seeding, if I understood you correctly, you're recommending against that amendment. My question would be, if we're going to keep that exemption, could staff look at or, or give an opinion on, could we require testing before allowing that fertilizer with phosphorus? Because if, if the fertilizer, if the phosphorus level is already, you know, at the appropriate level or higher, then maybe we shouldn't allow that exemption.
I think that is something that could be considered. Currently, as stated in the state law, it's, there is an exception for establishing new turf or repairing turf as well as an exception for soil testing. So we're recommending, you know, adjusting our code so that it matches state law.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not comfortable, like, the groundwater doesn't care if you're putting down new seed, right? If the phosphorus level's too high, the phosphorus level's too high, no matter what, you know, whether your seed's within the first 12 months or not. So that's why I just have concerns allowing people to use fertilizer with phosphorus if we're, if we don't know what the current levels are. Right? From an environmental standpoint, the damage is going to be done.
I don't see any other- Okay, I don't see any other questions, but one last call council, and then we'll open that public hearing. Okay, I don't have any more questions, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, I don't know if there's anyone physically present that wants to give public comment, or if we have anyone online that would like to.
Okay, is anyone in attendance here wanting to comment? Okay, thank you. I will now request the online attendees to raise their hand if they'd like to comment, if they're calling in by phone, star nine. I see one commenter currently. I'll have to turn the camera on for the timer when I, over there. Okay, so I'll promote. We're just going to get the camera up on the timer so that people can see. Here we go. Mary Victor.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish over 20 years, and I've been doing stormwater advocacy since, publicly since 3/17/2015. And I just have to say, I think that the staff and the consultant have done an extremely exceptional job. There are not a lot of changes, but everything has been looked at very thoroughly, very clear, and all the things that Stephanie and the consultant presented tonight are extremely well-studied. So I had emailed in earlier because I knew staff was going to present and speak on things, and I would basically say, there are 10 pages from 355 to 365 in the packet, which are the matrix of all the comments put in by people today, and I think those reflect everything. So I really think that you are to the point where you can adopt the 2021 King County Surface Manual with the supplied main motion as given by staff. That's on page 248 of the packet of 455 pages. I did in my email say that we should do the tree thing, because if you have an easement where there's a drainage easement, which is actually required by King County Surface Water Design Manual, you're really not supposed to have trees in it, and like, all of Sammamish Plateau water and sewers easements that are official, they say that you can't put structures or rockeries or, or trees or anything in them. There may be some smaller type trees, but you want things with fibrous roots on a steep slope, but you really don't want them over the pipe. And I totally 100% agree with what Stephanie said tonight. The Urban Forestry Management Plan is coming up, there will be things talked about that, and then I know David Pyle has on the thing to talk about the critical areas, scope work and phase three of the development regulations coming up. I personally live in a house that's half in a landslide hazard area, half below it with the steep slope where there's been landslides, and I've done a native plant vegetation professionally with the Horticulturist Arborist over the last two years. So we will be working on that. So I don't really think that we need to have any of the potential motions to amend done because I think Pam's, Councilmember Stewart's, concerns over too much phosphorus or PVC, I really feel those are handled by the WAC code and the way it is currently written. On the acceptable pipe sizes, I had asked a lot about the eight-inch pipe, which is accepted by King County, but only in special, and the way they've written it, it gives the flexibility to the city, and I believe it's written properly. On the tree things, if you are going to have a motion for it, I don't think the tree should only come off the Public Works Standard Street Trees for Right-of-Way list because there are other plant options, other bush options, other shrub options. So I think it could be any of those suitable as an acceptable type per the state, and not just that document. And that's really all I had to say, just thanks for all the work. I think this one's ready to go, and I know you need to adopt it by 6:30. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, we do have a second commenter that I will now promote.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, this is Stephanie Rudeout. I only have one comment tonight, it's specific to the Bluma. I want on the record that if you're going to revoke Bluma, that you do so by-
I'm Ms. Rudeout, we, this is the, I believe that's-
Am I on the wrong one?
Yes.
Wouldn't surprise me, I just had a child get up. Okay, I'll check back in, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I don't see any other commenters for this particular item.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I will turn it over to council then.
Madam Mayor, do we, are we just waiting to, so we're going to just, on the 21st, this is coming back to us, and then we'll make a motion to adopt? Is that the understanding I have here?
We have to wait till the 21st.
Yeah, till the 21st. Okay, thanks, that's, I'm satisfied and ready for the 21st, thanks.
Council, anything else? Okay, I don't see anything, so we will see you all back on the 21st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, is this public hearing staying open until the next meeting?
That's up to council. I see head nods that they would like to keep it open rather than closing it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay, so we have another public hearing. This is on the 2023, 2028 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. Pardon? Okay, all right, so I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Elgash, Audrey Starcy, and Doug McIntyre.
Sorry, just stating that we have 10 minutes left until 11.
Is your intro, Jeff, longer than 10 minutes so that we can extend?
I promise it won't be, but why don't you extend first?
Okay. Better entertain a motion to extend. We have a, this public hearing, I suspect our deliberation might not be short, and then we have-
How about a motion to move this topic to next week?
I'll second that.
The public hearing?
Yes.
Hmm, do we have people on the line though wishing to give? We can open it and keep it open.
Given the public hearings been advertised, I think it would be better to at least start it tonight, and you can always continue it.
Okay, because yeah, I don't think we're going to have a lot of people that stayed on the line till 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, if we extend, if we keep the public hearing open, then we can gather more public feedback, but, so-
I moved to extend to 11:30.
Thank you.
I need to remove my second then from the prior motion.
What prior motion, sorry?
That we just made to move this to-
Remove my motion.
Oh, I, sorry, I missed the second.
Second, this one, Councilmember Stewart's.
Okay, and that was till 11:30, correct? All right. I don't see any further discussions, so all those in favor extending to 11:30, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of, was it 5-2? We are extending to 11:30, I can count still, barely, but, go ahead, Jeff, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, council members, and interim city manager, my name is Jeff Elgash, Republic Works Director. Tonight, we plan to open up a public hearing related to the 2023-2028 Six-Year Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. Our speakers tonight primarily will be Doug McIntyre, our Senior Transportation Planning Manager, and during question and answer, Audrey Starcy, our Deputy Director, and myself, Republic Works Director, will be available for Q and A. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Good evening, Mayor Malachow, members of council, Doug McIntyre here, Department of Public Works. We're here to discuss the 2023-2028 tip with the council. This is a follow-up to our workshop on May 24th, and tonight specifically, we will be holding a public hearing to take public testimony. And before I get too far, I just have to say that I've been having internet connectivity issues tonight, so if I drop off, I apologize, I'll try to rejoin as quickly as possible. It seems to be happening about once every hour, so I'm probably due for one soon, so sorry in advance. So with that being said, we have some presentation topics on the screen here for you. We're going to make it a relatively concise presentation. The intent really is just to show you the changes that have been made based on the input we received on May 24th, and then, of course, open a public hearing, take public testimony, and then open it up for council questions. Yes, sorry, I kind of jumped to the, to the second slide here, but again, just receiving public testimony is the main purpose and intent for tonight, and then going over the draft, review, revised updated draft of the 2023-2028 tip. So you've seen these slides plenty of times now, but we always feel like it's important to just reset the conversation and kind of root it back in, in what we're trying to do, the fundamentals, if you will. So as background, all cities in Washington are required to adopt a six-year tip that's pursuant to RCW 3577010. The tip is then updated annually, it must be consistent with our comprehensive plan, and it informs the city's budget, but it is not itself a budget, and the tip is a requirement for grant funding eligibility. The real purpose of a tip is kind of the three prongs here, it's making sure that we're transparently investing in our system so that the public knows what we intend to do. We are also identifying very specific solutions to the system needs, of which there are many, and then also being clear about what our anticipated timeframes for project completion So now the substance of tonight, again, we had a really good conversation on the 24th, I thought that was time really well spent. Staff took that input, and we talked and made some changes, both to the project lists as well as the revenue assumptions. So first off, are just the project changes that we made. As you probably noticed in your agenda bill, we did remove TR-02, which is the Isqal Pine Lake Road Phase 1 Improvement. That was to take place between Southeast 32nd and Kohani Boulevard. So that got removed from the proposed projects list and dropped down to the long-range system completion list, and in its place, we put TR-115, that's actually a new number, which has previously been TR-05, that's where you see the 05 in parentheses there. That is the Sahali Way improvements between the north city limits and the intersection of Sahali Way and 28/223rd. There's a couple reasons for that, one, we heard that there was concerns with geographic equity, that there was not enough north-end projects, and additionally, we knew that there was interest from the council to expend as much tip dollars, the traffic impact fee dollars, as possible, and adding Sahali to the list, Phase 1 here, actually allows us to expend slightly more than what was allowed to be expended on Isqal Pine Lake Road. So that's change number one to the project list. Second here, we updated the project costs for the TR-110 project, that is the Isqal School District mitigation project, including drainage improvements for the 228 Avenue Southeast segment right outside of the Providence Heights campus, which will eventually have a elementary school and high school on it. And that cost in the agenda bill, it went down to 3.7 million, and that's directly from the school district. Some further changes we made to the project list was that we moved the three failing intersections to the top of the list, and we also highlighted them in blue. We heard that there was not enough kind of clarity on where those projects were, so we wanted to make it clear upfront that those were top, top of the priority regardless of their score. We need to fix those failures as required by state law. And then in review of the mini project list that we have in the comprehensive plan, we actually found a couple of projects, the list is on the screen here, I guess, suppose it's more than a couple, I think it's six projects and one program that we needed to include in the long-range system completion list. These were projects that were on old co-op plan lists from 2015 that, for consistency with the co-op plan and the tip, we wanted to make sure that we included for transparency's sake. On the screen, I'll just kind of quickly run down them. TR-20, that is a connection, it's actually currently a disconnect in the system, there's a dead-end street, kind of two streets dead-ending into just open space, and that is a connection that is proposed to be made back in 2015. TR-34, which is the intersection right outside City Hall, that is an intersection which needs further analysis and proposal for improvements. At one point in time, it was looked at as a roundabout, but we're not sure that's the actual case at this point in time, definitely needs further study. TR-23 is the Parkway segment improvement between Southeast 212th Avenue and the south city limits, so basically roughly about the southeast 43rd roundabout at the bottom of the hill. TR-24 and TR-26 are kind of tied at the hip, those are essentially Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Southeast Dokey Hill Road improvements. There's, many of you are probably familiar with the notch, that is the unincorporated, kind of odd rectangle of unincorporated King County right off of Dokey Hill Road. So the improvements would go from Isqal Beaver Lake Road to the west side of the notch, and then from the west side of the notch to Trossetto Boulevard, so that's TR-24 and TR-26. And then TR-30, there is a new roadway connection from Southeast 266th Way to Beaver Lake Drive, so this is actually adjacent to the Belvedere Barricade. This is the Trossetto neighborhood, it's just on the west side there, which would connect the Trossetto neighborhood to Beaver Lake Drive. Again, a project from the co-op plan from 2015 that we wanted to include in the long-range system completion list. Finally, here, we have a transit program that was included as a program for, actually, this is, this program itself was proposed to be in the funded list, the six-year funded list. So now focusing on the revenues, so we did have a few revenue changes. I mentioned this one a little bit earlier, but the traffic impact fees that we're showing as expended in the six-year window increased from 11.9 million to 13.5, and that's of course due to swapping out the projects, TR-02 for TR-115/05. Second down there on the list is, we've increased the amount of stormwater, stormwater fees, funding the stormwater portion of transportation improvement projects. That amount increased from 4.7 to 7.4 million, and that's a total increase of 2.7 million. That was based on council input. If you recall from the 24th, Audrey presented a slide about the stormwater management utility funding, and council input indicated that we could assume a little bit more. The amount of REIT dollars, we also heard that that was maybe assumed a little bit low, so we did increase that by a total of about 500,000 annually, that means about $84,500 in additional REIT revenue. And then the general fund ending balance that we showed in the draft tip, it actually went down a little bit by just a slight amount, 400,000 there, to 16.5 million. So those are the proposed changes that we've made to the tip since the last presentation to council. The next slide here, I know that you can't read this, nobody can read this, but the point of this slide is just to re, kind of, show, reiterate or re-show the, to the council just how we're managing all of this. So the right third of this is all the revenue sources, the colored boxes at the top, those are the REIT dollars, general fund ending balance, tip fees, as well as grants and other funding. So that's, we kind of have the right side being revenues, the middle chunk in the, in the slide is our expenditures, that's these rows right here, the six-year expenditures and the cumulative totals, then we have the projects on the left side. So we are still, you know, updating this list based on all those changes. Once council starts discussion, we can bring up the actual tip, and I can navigate it like I did last time in a much more readable way. You'll see that these two projects down here are highlighted, those are just the projects that we swapped out, that's a Hollyway project for this, we just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then just to kind of tie a nice bow on the revenue assumptions, we have this table here showing the amount assumed for each source of revenue in the tip. I won't read it out in detail, but the total here, we're assuming 66.2 million in the six-year window. So the next slides here, we're going to kind of just dive into the locations of the projects, and I'm going to show a project list and then show how those translate to on the ground. So here we have the projects that are proposed to be funded, there's about 25 projects here. This also includes programs too, so the programs are not location-based, they are oftentimes citywide, and so those are shown separately from here. But spatially speaking, this is what the distribution of projects looks like. You'll notice the biggest difference between today and the 24th of May is the addition of Sahali Way at the north end, again, providing that kind of geographic distribution a little bit more equitable. And then, of course, you have the intersection projects in circles, and then the segment slash corridor projects in the lines. The programat- The programmatic items are down in the bottom right. But this kind of gives you a good sense of what we're proposing to do in that six-year window. Second here, you have the long-range system completion projects. These are fewer in number, but they do include the ones that we added based on secondary review of the comprehensive plan. Spatially speaking, this is what it looks like. You'll notice the changes here primarily are focused on the Dokey Hill Road addition projects, as well as now Isqal Pine Lake Road Phase One is showing on this map as well. We can't forget about the regional projects. These are projects that the city doesn't have direct control over, but that directly impact our performance of our system. Projects such as the 202 Sahali Way Roundabout, the, you know, intersection of Isqal Pine Lake Road and Isqal Falls City Road, that's a city of Isqal project, et cetera. So these are shown spatially on the map here. You'll notice the square in the middle, that's the North Sammamish Parkway, which council's received information in the past on this one, which has been delayed by Sound Transit, but we still wanted to show it just because we're keeping track of it. It's on our radar. And if it does come up to be accelerated, Sound Transit gets more funding, we'll be ready to go. So this, this one just kind of shows, again, just kind of the, the funding sources on the right, the colored boxes at the top, and then the projects on the left. Again, I know you can't read this. We will bring up the actual tip when council does discuss this so that we can navigate it a little bit more appropriately. But these projects, combined with all of the, all of the regional long-range system completion projects, looks like this spatially. It has, once you factor in all the projects, it does have more of that geographic equity that I know council was interested in. But of course, we can make changes as needed. So just a couple of notes about next steps here. Really, after tonight, we will take council input and revise the tip as needed and come back on July 5th to adopt the tip. At that point, once we get an adopted tip, we will share it with the state to comply with the state law. So just a little bit more specifics here. Again, yeah, we'll edit the tip. And, you know, really tonight, we're looking for a majority direction on any changes. We feel like we have a pretty good kind of final draft here. Maybe not quite final draft, but maybe this step below final draft, I guess. But we do seek that kind of clear direction from council. And then, and then after that, adopt the tip and send it to WashDot. So with that, I will stop talking and ask the mayor to open up the public hearing. We did have a note here just about that we will be tracking all comments and actually include an exhibit in the next agenda packet that will have all comments just verbatim for transparency's sake. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for that, Doug. If I can get you to minimize your screens, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tree.
Doug, quick question on the comments that you just made a comment about. Would that be all the emails that we've been receiving as well on the TCIP? Okay, and then can I ask?
Yes, that's correct. We have put it into what we call a comment tracker. So I have all of the comments verbatim, and I categorize them with contact info and that kind of thing. So we will have a full list of all that.
And the last question I have, maybe for Victor, but is there a reason why 228th and East, Isqal Pine Lake Road intersection is not on our long-range plan?
Yeah, that probably, we probably might need to check with Victor on some of the specifics because he does the modeling for us. But essentially, that is, the short answer is that it doesn't fail. Our standard, it doesn't fail the concurrency standard. It is meeting, it's LOS, the level of service. If you like, we can definitely check with Victor and get a better response.
Do you plan to have Victor available for Q and A on the July 5th meeting as well?
Thank you. That's all. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Tree. Sorry, which intersection? Isqal Pine Lake Road and what?
228th. You see where TR 56, 54 is, just to the north of that. I'm just thinking when the school's built and there's that, project is completed, are we going to have to do some kind of rearranging of how that intersection works right now? Maybe we need to study. I don't know.
Gotcha. All right. Councilmember Lamb.
I had some questions regarding Isqal Falls City Road. And so Jeff sent out the ratings for the different intersections, so thank you for that, Jeff. So I was mapping those intersections according to the different road projects. And each of those intersections, with the exception of Kohani Boulevard and Isqal Pine Lake Road, they're either rated a B or a C, morning and, peak morning and peak evening. So I'm unclear as to why, for example, TR 03, which is widening it to five lanes, where it's rated that an intersection at Southeast 48th is rated a C and B. And so that kind of pertains for all of Isqal, Isqal Pine Lake Road. That those five intersections on that stretch aren't, they're rated either a B or a C. So I just wanted some clarity on that.
I think, go ahead, Doug.
No, 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 go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I was just going to offer, given the technical nature of the question, I think that's a great one that I'd want to bring back Victor for, and we can dive into the model and the pieces that you're specifically looking at, Councilmember Lamb. And I think we can give you a very good answer. We're just not prepared to answer that tonight.
Okay.
I suspect I can answer it. It's probably because it's our public work standards. Our public work standards prescribe that arterials have a certain geometry to them.
I'm not understanding you need a certain geometry, but we're talking about widening it to five lanes.
Principal arterial.
But if there's no.
Public work standards, a principal arterial prescribes what it would so look like.
Yeah, now I understand with clarity with the mayor. Yeah, we do have citywide adopted standards for each of our roadway classifications. And the standard for a principal is a five-lane section with curb gutter, sidewalk, amenity strips, those kinds of things. That's adopted by, and we impose that upon development, who have to do frontage improvements and so forth. So at the moment, we're bound by creating or living up to that standard. However, when projects go forward, there are opportunities for variances, modifications, environmental avoidance and mitigations where we can reduce impacts. But we do have to start with the standard because that's what we know when we begin with that.
So what you're saying is that the intersection may be fine, traffic may be flowing fine, but we're going to raise the standard or to meet a standard, even though there may be nothing wrong with the road?
Given the past modeling that has been done to date, it may show the need for those improvements. And to meet the improvements, we would start with our standard.
Okay, well, okay. So I was also looking on that same sheet that 202 and East Lake Sammamish Parkway actually is performing worse than Sahali and 202. They, 202 and East Lake Sammamish Parkway are both rated Fs in morning and afternoons. And I just wanted to know, and I understand that they are in Redmond, but how much have we worked with Redmond and King County to try to resolve those, that particular intersection at Whole Foods?
The work done to date is based on a study that was done with WashDOT a few years ago. That study is available to review again. I don't have that at my fingertips, but there was a corridor study that was done. Outside of that, there has not been direct participation or interlocal or dollars of any kind discussed with partnering with, for those projects outside the city. I highly recommend that we, at some point, have a frank discussion about taking a leadership role to help encourage those projects advanced sooner than later, such as SR 202 and Sahali Way. There has not been significant, you know, significant movement up to this point.
Because it sounds like we're kind of waiting for somebody to take the lead. And, you know, if we could put money into that, those projects, I think that would be like a good initiative, especially since Marymore Station will be opening up and there will be definitely more traffic on East Lake Sammamish.
We, as staff, concur with your recommendation. But it does require commitment, staffing levels, and, you know, interlocal agreements to advance those projects that are, at least that start outside the city. Because the other jurisdiction is responsible for those improvements. But if we're, if we take a leadership role and the cities are receptive or the agencies in charge of those areas are receptive to that, then we can help advance those projects sooner than later.
And my only other one was, I noted TR 43. That intersection is rated an A and a B, and there's a roundabout that is, looks like it's slated to be added.
That one is more about pedestrian safety, I think, from what I can recall. So that's 212th and Southeast 28th. There's a four-way stop right now. There's a school Creekside Elementary to the west that has really one way in, roughly basically one way in and one way out. And it, all the traffic flows through that. And the walking, the pedestrian, the students who walk to school often have to cross that, that intersection. And we've heard in the past that it is a, can be a little bit tricky at times. So that has, that has something to do with it, is its safety aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. I had a quick question about the traffic study for Northeast 8th Street between 28th, 228th and 224th, or 44th, rather. So that's, it's a proposed TCIP project. And I had a question about the, it says traffic study, but the cost in 2026 is $900,000. And maybe you could help me understand that.
Right. We have been working with the schools this season to the changes that they've proposed to make at the two schools. And there's a ripple effect that's having a backup on traffic operations and the whole corridor. So we're recommending a study. And then the study is not worth $900,000, but the outcome might be restriping solutions that fit within a rough budget of $900,000. It's a placeholder, we don't know yet, but it's really a two-part. Let's study it, and then we have a placeholder plan for some dollars to, you know, contemplate a solution.
And that's just based on a kind of ballpark from what you understand that type of improvement would cost?
If it's a simple striping thing and minor changes, yes. If it becomes more significant, I won't know until we dive into the detail. And how far back do we have to make improvements from the intersection where they're actually operating? There may be opportunities that the improvements that we partner with the school are on the school site as opposed to out in the public right of it. We just don't know yet. But they have made some changes. There's been kind of a shift from moving the traffic from one of the schools to the other schools, but it's had a, you know, an unintended consequence. So we really need to study that school impact and what's happening in the corridor. And I don't have solutions yet until we can actually spend the money and time to figure that out.
Lucky we're working on that relationship with our schools.
We, I will commend Doug and the team who meet on a monthly, if not every other month basis, with all the districts. And they have a wonderful partnership on dealing with issues, so.
I'm delighted to hear that, actually. Thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. One question, can TIF funds be spent on simply a study or the planning phase? Or can they only be spent on construction?
They can be spent on the, on the project.
So any phase of the project?
Any phase of the project, because it leads towards the completion of it.
Okay, so one of my questions is for the TR 11505, which is the Sahali Way project. There's 1.274 million allocated for the first year. And I was just curious because I didn't think we'd kind of landed on a plan for that yet. And I know that part of the reason to put that on there was for TIF funds. So I'm just curious, you know, I want to make sure that we, again, that we don't lose any TIF funding, but I'm just, I'm not sure what we're going to be spending 1.27 million dollars on in year one.
We will come back with a scope of work to the council and a budget that clearly articulates what the plan will be for the level of work in the first phase of the project. At this point in time, we put it as a placeholder in the tip for planning purposes so that we can show and demonstrate geographic equity as well as demonstrating a reasonable approach to spending some of the traffic impact fee dollars. I don't have the specific plan before you. We need to go bring the consultant on board, create that scope of work, the budget, and the spending plan that goes with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure again that we've got something reasonable that we're allocating the TIF funds to, that we reasonably think we're going to use. And if not, let's find a project where we, where we have higher confidence that we can. Just generally, TR, C, D, F, G, and I, which are, just for those following along at home, TRC is the sidewalk project, TRD is intersection and safety improvement, F is the street lighting program, G is the school safety zone improvements, and I is the transit, transit study program. For all of those, I think the funding is so low that it's not really going to accomplish anything. There, it looks like there's, you know, just sort of a very, very, very low placeholder dollar in those. And I, I think they're too important to just put some minimal amount of money. So like, the sidewalk project has $100,000 a year. I'm pretty sure $100,000 doesn't buy you squat in terms of a sidewalk. And I, intersection and safety, $30,000 a year. The school safety zone improvements, $15,000 a year. And if I read correctly, as we were going over school concurrency, we are required to provide safe school walking conditions for a mile around each school. So I would actually say, one of my big changes that I think we need to make to this before we can approve it, is we need to put, even if, even if there are placeholder projects for creating a plan, we need a plan for safe walking routes within a mile of every school in the city. And I think that that needs to be done ASAP. We know that our two biggest traffic problems are school drop-off and pickup and our outside-the-city choke points. And if we really want anybody to ever walk or ride their bike to school, there have to be safe routes. And all those kids who live within a mile don't get bus service. So I think that that's a win-win-win, right? I think that it improves safety for the most vulnerable, right, for our kids. It will potentially encourage people to get out of their cars at the most critical junctures, and it's good for the environment. So I think before I could approve a TCIP, I would need to see something realistic there to address those types of changes. And in terms of a transit study program of $50,000, again, I'm not sure that that buys us a whole lot of anything. And I think we made it clear that transit is a, is a top priority, particularly with the light rail station opening up.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, and I don't disagree with anything you're saying right now, but I want to make sure that we are doing questions for staff right now so that we can get to the public hearing and then have these conversations.
Sorry about that. I just got on a roll. I'm sorry.
Nope. Like I said, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. Okay, Councilmember Moran, questions? Okay, no questions. Great. Oh, you do have questions. Sorry.
I do have a question. So my question is going, is a funding question. Because I don't want to lose any funding either. And so I'm a little concerned as, since we switched to, we got rid of the V over C, but we collected funds for V over C. So as we switched from this V over C to, what do you call it?
Intersection.
I don't know, what do you want to call it?
That's all we have.
What is it?
We have intersection level of service.
All right.
It's currently on the books.
So, so we switched to that. Are we not going to lose, are we going to have to give back funds?
That is a, that is a very interesting question. We, we had planned with the Bluma to do code and comp plan amendments and then update the traffic impact fee program. But because the next item that's on the agenda tonight, if we get there, that got postponed, if you will. So we need to bring back an update to the traffic impact fee program and discern what we can and can't do. Because the, the last update to the traffic impact fee program was actually in 2014. So the short answer to your question would be, there's a distinct possibility that because those projects no longer provide capacity improvements. those projects no longer provide capacity improvements related to development, there may be a need to refund money. That's a possibility going forward.
Okay.
So I'm just, that's, that's a reality based on the actions that have been taken today.
Okay. And safe walking routes?
One, one quick thing with that. We plan to do that traffic impact fee update hopefully by September, but no later than October, November of this year. We've got a staff resource issue that we're, we're hoping to hire a staff person in the next month or so and then we could dive right into that project. So I want to give you context of how quickly the traffic impact fee update is planned to come back to council.
So we won't have to wait till fall to find out how much money we have to give back, do we?
I, I need to know from the technical experts what their opinion is, whether we have to give things back or not. I don't have the answer for that right at the moment. And here's the other thing, the outcome of that might result in us doing an update to the traffic, excuse me, to the current tip, which you can do a tip when you have new information, we just have to hold another public hearing. So I don't have all the answers at this point in time, given the actions that we've taken today.
Great. Okay. Safe walking routes, I'm going to make a comment, Kristy, really quick, sorry. I agree with that 100% that around the schools and I would put that way before I'd put money on sidewalks on 212th.
So Jeff, I have a quick question just relative to Councilmember Moran's and I think this, a lot of this was in the emails that I sent relative to impact fees. So you said we'll get an update in September, October-ish. I assume that will come in advance of the, the budget because potentially if our traffic impact fees are reduced, that would then impact our budget. So what, what, my question is, is we'll have the information prior to the budget?
I hope so because we, we are pivoting now as a result of, of policy changes to adapt to those changes as quickly as we can. And we were planning to do that at a later date, now we need to accelerate that work. And I'm waiting, ideally, we have an open position that we hope to fill in the next month, which we can now, you know, jump on and do that. So ideally, yes, but I can't guarantee that because we're, we're pivoting, we're in the pivot mode.
Yep, no, I get it, I get it. All right, thank you. Okay, round two on questions, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I, Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't totally follow. So V over C was not, I mean, it was enacted for a moment. It didn't, right? I mean, we, we enacted it.
We've always had a V over C.
But I'm saying that, so, so that's just it. So what I'm trying to understand is how, how can you say we'd have to give money back? Because the, the, I, like, what I'm, hold on, let me, I'm sorry.
Can I answer the question or?
No, I want to clarify my question, I'm sorry, I'm trying to clarify. So when we, when we tried to enact a new V over C, it was very quickly revoked, right? It was, we had to revoke it. And so I'm, I'm not clear on how a change that had no longevity could cause us to have to give money back.
It's changing what projects you have to do based on concurrency. So if you don't have a concurrency failure, we originally had concurrency failures based on the V over C, those you could have used impact fees for. Because the V over C is gone and those are not currently failures, you can't use traffic impact fees for them. You can only use it on levels of service intersections.
But that's what our code was forever and the new V over C didn't.
We had a V over C previously.
If I could ask staff, but that's okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Are we silent because we want me to try to answer?
I, I was hoping to get an answer from staff, but, it's okay.
She wants to hear from you.
Okay, so, so in part, and Doug backed me up on this, but the V over C has been around for quite some time and then it got challenged for all the reasons that we all know about. When the traffic impact fee program was last updated in 2015, the modeling at that time had certain assumptions based on levels of service standards that were in place at that time. That precipitated deficiencies in corridors which precipitated projects and said projects warranted the opportunity to charge traffic impact fees. And that has been upended as of recent because with, we had put it on hold, the, the traffic, the, the transportation capital improvement plan has not been adopted or re-updated in the last three years. The last update is 2019 due to all the reasons that we all know about. So now we're kind of rebuilding it from scratch. And because we don't have those deficiencies any longer, we will have to do a, we are recommending a staff to bring back an update to the traffic impact fee program to recognize those changes by policy that have recently occurred.
So that'll change future impact fees, not impact fees that we collected in the past?
We will defer to legal counsel and the, the subject matter experts to advise us as such. And I'm, I'm not that person at this moment in time, but your point is well-taken.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, did I miss anything on that?
No, I think that's accurate. Yeah.
Okay, so I don't have any more hands up, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll keep it open, but let's go ahead and open it in case we have anybody who's present would like to comment.
Are you wanting to extend the meeting first again, or?
Well, we got one minute, good call.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
Move to extend to midnight.
Second, okay. All those in favor of extending till midnight, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five-two, we will extend till midnight. Okay, let's open the public hearing. If there's anyone physically present at City Hall that would like to give comment or on the line.
Okay, if you are attending online, please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item. Press star nine if you are calling by phone. And start your comments with your, your name and your city of residence for the record. I will promote the first commenter. We currently have two who have raised their hands. Sorry, you're muted currently. Diana, you're currently muted, we can't hear you.
I thought you went mute.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Next to read Providence Point, I'm a member of our Government Affairs Committee, which explains why I have the stamina to outlast everybody else. So I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Providence Point community. Our back gate, as you know, exits onto 228 and it's a commercial driveway along, situated there with Marion Wood and Bellwood and Low Rice Business Park. So we're really sensitive to anything that happens on 228. And I want to comment particularly just quickly on TR 54, which is the southeast 40th intersection of 228. And that, of course, is the failing intersection. And we indicate that you want to put a turn lane in there, which is just fine, wonderful, but, you know, what's the timeline on it? Because the school is scheduled to open in the fall of 2024 and this has, it appears that the bulk of the work on the center turn lane will be completed in 2026. So that doesn't seem, you know, like, it seems like things are going to get a lot worse for this Mamish Island people before it gets better. So that would be two years of increased traffic and that's, you know, there's going to be a lot of school buses coming through there. And so, you know, it represents thousands of additional trips. So I, you know, I think something needs to be done before 2026. But the school says, you know, they're going to start construction next month. And also, you know, so 228 is going to be widened in front of school, two, three lanes in each direction and a couple of turn lanes. But the northbound turn lane, northbound through lanes are going to merge back into one lane before the intersection. So again, this may slow traffic down and cause more congestion, which could conceivably even extend to Pine Light Road and 228 intersection. So Providence Point people do have the option of exiting out the front with the new traffic signal. However, you know, if the 228 is going to be congested, we're just going to go down the hill and, you know, kind of bypass them and shut together. So that's basically all I wanted to say about that. And we're still waiting to hear about the right-of-way permit to see what exactly is going to happen at the school entrance and, and the development. So that's basically all I have. I, I know that the TR 110 project, I think that represents a sidewalk, which would be really nice, except when it gets to 40th, there's no more cycle. So what are we going to do there? So anyway, thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad I, you know, was able to stay up long enough to speak with y'all. And hi, Doug. And good night. I'm going to bed.
Mayor, you're on mute. We have one more.
Councilmember Moran, your hand is up. Do you have a question?
I did have a question for Jeff, it was on that, on 40th Street. Under the new and improved plans, does that intersection?
I can answer. I think I know where you're going with this. The, the mitigation that we negotiated with the school district includes them doing the installation work of the, of the, what we call the, there's a T for it, remember the, Doug might remember the name of it. But anyway, we're not, we're proposing not to put a signal in because that would attract too much traffic through the neighborhood, so we're looking to put the, the ramp modification in. In the event that the school district is, is delayed further and the city is required to build those improvements, the duration shown in the tip is completing it by 2026. However, it is a mitigation requirement of the school and they've, they've agreed to build it as a part of their project. And so it's actually becomes, their entire package includes the improvements at the intersection of 40th and 228. So, so we were kind of bracketing, if, if we have to pay for it, it'll be a little bit later in the plan, but if they can build it ahead of time, then they will, it's a mitigation condition for them, the school district.
Okay, so they have to, they have to do it, so, but does it fail?
It's currently failing, the intersection at 40th and 228. It is a failing, it's one of the three that after all the modeling revisions that we've done and whatnot, it remains to be a failing intersection until the improvements are made. And those improvements that are proposed are enough to get it out of failure mode.
Okay, all right, just double checking, never know under that new plan. Thank you.
And, and Mayor, we do have one more who has raised their hand to comment, so I will promote her right now.
Thank you.
Okay, one last comment tonight. I have a special guest on, my name is Stephanie Rudat and I live in Samamish. Okay, I wanted to talk about what I'm hoping gets invested in and to, I believe it was, I can't remember whose point it was, but to put more sidewalks and to invest more in them around the schools versus a project on 212th, I fully support. We have spent, if you look back, I'm glad to see that there's more equitable investment being made across the city, but I think that really to make it equitable against the past 19 years, there's going to have to be more put into the, the north side because the south and the west have really gotten a lot of the attention. We have major sidewalk issues, especially if you look around Inglewood Middle School. So I'm hoping that you guys look at that and that when it comes to budget season, we are more generous with our investing in that and that that is considered by council because budget season has been really painful to watch the past couple of years. We also need to fix the bottlenecks. I don't know how, I don't have the answers, the engineers do, but those bottlenecks and choke points are really concerning to me as a resident for emergencies. We already have shoulder issues and are, we have like a, a big problem with medics, or we don't get medics here, but EMTs being able to get by and the ambulances. And as we keep adding people to schools and to the community, we really need to be considerate of those choke points. I'm glad to see that everything is moving forward at Sahali Way and the 202 with the roundabout, but it sure seems like we could use more roundabouts in the community to increase traffic flow. Those would probably help the failing intersections tremendously. What other note? But anyway, I'll wrap it up so you guys can go home. I just appreciate you guys focusing on this and looking at ways to make the community safer. Say good night.
Good night.
We do have another commenter who's raised his hand, so I will promote him.
Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'm not going to go over too many of the comments I wrote in regards to the six-year TIP, we can save that for later. Just a couple extemporaneous comments based on what was heard tonight and a couple observations. First, in the long-term green projects, there are eight road proj, road projects. There are 115, 02, 03, 08, 23, 24, 26, and 116. The projected cost for these total 220 million dollars. The city has spent in capital across all capital projects in the city, all aspects of capital, in the first 22 years of the city's incorporation, roughly 320 million. My problem and what I'm troubled with is there's no need for any of these projects now that are the lane capacity projects. Totally agree with complete urban streets, with sidewalks, with intersection improvements, with safety, with bike lanes, appropriate trails, but lane capacity isn't needed. And it goes to what I harp on also, on, a lot, it's getting late also, is land use is what is beneath everything and that needs to be really ironed out before you advance lane capacity projects of any type because there are drastically different outcomes based on what direction the city heads. So it's, first is land use, then comes a transportation master plan to support that land use, or I'm sorry, then comes a concurrency standard to support that and then a TMP and then a six-year TIP. So I totally support a six-year TIP covering everything in it at this time except lane capacity, other than if a road was failing that isn't tied to school choke points or choke points outside the city. I know we're working on those items, so I'll leave it at that for a second. And the other thing, and you don't have to satisfy me, I'm just making a statement, I've. I've never been satisfied with any answer that did not talk about why the city did not adopt a partial TIP the last couple of years for projects that weren't related. I know there was a lot of movement to try and change the comp plan and change land use and ultimately that would change some of the projects. I don't agree with that, but I understand and that concept is correct. Land use drives this, but there's a whole lot more besides land use. Why weren't those things on the TIP and moving forward and advancing? It seems like most projects have been stalled for two years. And the last comment is I would suggest, even though it's sort of tied to this, but not really, I'd suggest bringing the funding for road overlay projects back up to 3 million a year. There was a lot of time and effort put into that in the past to get that number right. We can't let road overlays not keep up to the standards that they've been at for years to save a lot of capital cost in the future. That's all I have tonight. Appreciate the chance to speak.
I just bumped the mayor out of the meeting inadvertently, so my apologies. That was my error there.
Yeah, she needed a break anyway, right?
Okay. Okay, we're putting her back. Okay. Madam Mayor, that was my error. I inadvertently kicked you out. That was our last commenter, Mr. Stickney. So, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and hold the public hearing open. So council, I'm going to turn this over to you, but my screen is all funky now. There we go. So if there are other questions, comments, now is an appropriate time. All right, I will make a comment then. We had a list of sidewalk projects in the city and it would be great if we could dig those back up. Off the top of my mind, I think it's 47th out on Isco Pine Lake Road. They have a huge sidewalk gap there. We have on Southeast 20th or Southeast 24th, it's getting late. It's right by Beaver Lake Park. There is a hill. There is no sidewalk there. I know that one was on the list as well. Resurrecting that list, I think, would be wise and I agree with Councilmember Stewart. Plugging in $100,000 a year is not going to buy us a whole lot of sidewalk. I think we spent half a million dollars on the sidewalk on 212 between Southeast 24th and Southeast 20th. So there was whatland there and there was mitigation, but it just speaks to how much money it costs to build sidewalks. And I agree as well that sidewalks going to our schools within a mile, it doesn't guarantee that students will walk to school, but I, there are kids in my own neighborhood that walk out on 212 where there is no sidewalk, to Creekside. We've had a neighbor's dog hit out there in the street on a leash. So providing those opportunities for students to be able to walk to school, I think, would be wise, but $100,000 isn't going to buy us much. So I would, I'd just like to ask staff if they can try and resurrect that sidewalk priority list because it's somewhere and there are several projects that we had already identified on it. So it might be good to kind of plug those in and then benchmark how much those might cost is to kind of have a reality check in some of those years for some of those projects. So, all right, Councilmember Moran.
Jeff, this is for you and this would be one of the things that we did when I've been on, I don't know how many school committees. It's to take a compass and draw, literally draw the circle around the schools for what is their walking area. And that would be what I would suggest to do for, you know, for the city to do. And that would be the walking area for what the districts consider for kids for walking to school. And those should be the first areas that we look at to make sure that we have sidewalks. And then from there, we can, we can look at, you know, where we can start filling in other sidewalks in the city. But we need to look at where the kids are able to walk and where they're required to walk to the schools and make sure that they have safe walking routes, you know, where they're supposed to be walking to start with. And if it's, you know, whether it be a path, because Tree Farm, they've got great trails in there, but just make sure they've got a safe walking route available.
We as staff concur that the city needs to embark upon a more expansive, safe routes to school program to all of the schools. We don't, we wholeheartedly support that. The challenge will come that the council would need to help us understand what revenue streams that you want to put with us. Because we can, we can tell you that gap projects of a certain length cost X number of dollars. And if we want to do one a year, 10 a year, we will need to come up with a revenue program to offset that. This tip does not do that because we took a, an extreme conservative approach and put no new funding in. And so if you'll go back through the spreadsheet that Doug has and look at how much money where we put it, there's very limited opportunity to rob Peter to pay Paul within the dollars we have. The council ought to contemplate new revenue streams and tell us such that in years, you know, three and four, four and five, five and six, that we can reasonably anticipate a new stream of money to help pay for those kinds of things. I really want the council to contemplate that because it's, if you want more, it costs more and we want this to be balanced. So anything that we're going to change, I want us all to be in partnership with that to understand how to do that. It's not a bad thing to raise taxes necessarily or fees or all of those things, but we were told up to this point not to do so and therefore we balanced it as best as we could. But again, I wholeheartedly support the concept of, I think Pam brought it up as well, within a mile radius of the schools, it should be one of our top priorities as a community and we in Public Works definitely support that. It's, but we had to balance this given the constraints that you gave us as well. So hopefully that helps.
Councilmembers Stewart.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jeff. And that's kind of what I was going to talk about next. For me personally, Jeff, what would really be helpful is, given that I think you got a lot of head nods and a lot of comments about the safe routes to school, that's a, that's a top priority. That's probably going to be really expensive. But I want to know, like, what's your ballpark estimate for how much that's going to cost to do that in the next six years? And then from my perspective, and I think we'll touch on this on the 28th, but from my perspective, we've got a lot of infrastructure projects. Bonds, bonds are an excellent way to raise funds that get paid for not just by the people who are here today, but they will get paid for by people who might come here tomorrow, right? So as people sell their homes and somebody new moves in, those people will pay their share for that infrastructure that they are going to use and exercise. And if we issue those bonds soon, money is still relatively inexpensive. It's getting more expensive every day, but now is the time to do that. And some of these infrastructure projects, I just don't think can wait. These safety projects, these, you know, making intersections safer, I just think we really need to do that. And to council, or to Mayor Malchow's point, we have a lot of sidewalk gaps even beyond the mile from school. We have a lot of multimodal connectivity projects that we really need to get to. It will, it's good for us from an environmental standpoint. It will be good for moving people around. I just think we got to get to it. So we need, I think, a much longer list of projects that we need to tackle so we really understand what that cost really looks like to make these, to deal with these safety issues and to really deal with those choke points and around the schools. And I know Doug, you do meet with the schools, but are there other projects that we need to be proposing about moving people in and out of the schools during the drop-off and pickup times that we need to be considering? Because I don't see any projects on there, on the list at all for any of that kind of stuff. So that would be my, that would be my two cents or maybe a few million, but yeah.
One comment back to Councilmember Stewart's. I love the idea of bonds because then we have a programmatic approach. The issue is, is how are we going to pay back the bonds? Is it going to come from sales tax, utility fees, those kinds of things? We'll need to understand that.
Right, well, that's a conversation for the 28th, Jeff. You're absolutely right. But I think that's what our workshop is on fiscal sustainability on the 28th of June. So, good, good call out.
I don't see any more hands up. One last call from council for any questions or comments for staff, but we'll hold that hearing open. And Scott or Doug, when is the next opportunity, just for those who might actually still be awake at 11:53 PM, that they'll be able to provide that comment to us?
So we're coming back to council on July 5th and that will be with the final draft of the tips for adoption. But we will take comments at any time. Email is perfectly fine. I take lots of phone calls throughout the week with resident questions and concerns. So that's also totally fine. I've been, like I said earlier in the meeting, I've been tracking everything in a spreadsheet. So anytime I get a comment, I'm going to put it in the spreadsheet and we'll, we'll put it in the packet, assuming we get the comment in time to put it in the packet.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you all. Appreciate it. I know this is a heavy lift for y'all. Okay, council, we extended to midnight. We have six minutes left, but we have several items left. You guys want to keep plowing through? Does anyone need a break or should we entertain a motion to extend?
I moved a table unfinished business and new businesses. Second it.
Okay, it's been seconded. So that's item 17, which is direction clarifying the reallocation of work relative to Bluma. And then superseding resolution on, from alternative 401, the new business is revising roles and procedures. Okay, Councilmember Lamb.
What do we mean by tabling?
That means we'll be talking about it at a later time. I think, Councilmember Moran, if you might want to specify when you're tabling at 2 or staff wants to weigh in.
Table it to date certain. And the city manager could decide on one that could fit on the calendar. Or if we need a special meeting, let's roll for the special meeting even. I got to get home.
All right, Mr. City Manager, I will allow staff, if, assuming this passes, to figure out where to plop these all in. Unless you want to comment and staff needs direction on 17 and 18 sooner than later.
Mayor, thank you. I get the sense that council would like to address those sooner than later. I think our challenge, as always, is that our agendas are packed and there's not really extra space right at the moment. However, if it is the will of council, we can come back next week and start with those two items. And then obviously next week, we'd have to make it into a special meeting. Right now it's a study session. We do have some, a fairly full meeting next week as well. However, if it's the will of council, we can obviously pivot and add those at the beginning of that meeting and then try to get through the rest of it next week.
Okay, hopefully that sounds minimal to council. All right, so motion on the floor is to table essentially the rest of the 17, 18, and 19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I think that was a vote of five to two, unless I heard anyone incorrectly. So we will table those. We do have council reports. I don't think there's anything terribly significant in mind. Councilmember Lamb, I know you need some direction from council, however.
It was just one for the pick meeting tomorrow, which was appointing somebody. Sorry, I don't have that up. Oh.
I think that's, yeah, I don't know the direction from us. Did you want to take any of the input back? I think.
I have input for items seven and eight.
Okay.
Okay.
So does anyone else have a council report?
Was this the, was this the item where we were, input regarding the?
TDRs, yes.
Yes.
Conservation futures, yes.
Mr. Pyle, please don't leave.
He was so close.
Council, we have two minutes, so.
Okay, so this was regarding the TDRs. And it was asking for cities to, they're looking for cities to back this in some way. And honestly, I think that this has got consequences for Sammamish. And I don't see how we can, without having a long discussion about this, I don't see how Sammamish can do that. Okay, so the TDRs, yeah, I mean, from, and Mr. Pyle, maybe you can help me with this.
I'm just trying to understand what the question is.
So it's regarding the Emerald Necklace and Dow Constantine's three and a half cent tax that he is looking for.
Levy lid lift.
Levy lid lift.
That he's looking for and how the Emerald Necklace and how it sounds so nice, how the TDRs that are associated with that, how they could affect Sammamish.
So council, sorry, and before I let David Pyle jump in, we probably need to extend by about five minutes or so.
Move to extend to 12:05. Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, 5070 will extend. Okay, go ahead.
So the, the city does have an interlocal agreement in place with King County for the purchase of up to 700 TDR units. A TDR unit does not equate to one dwelling unit. It depends on the sending site and the receiving site and what the zoning is. The, the interlocal agreement stipulates that the first 200 TDRs transferred or used in the city for density bonuses in the town center shall come from the interlocal agreement and shall come from sending sites exterior to the city in King County, according to the terms of the interlocal agreement. However, once, once the city, once the program surpasses that number, then the program or, then other TDRs are eligible within the city. So I think the question is, does the council want to pursue? And we'll be, we'll be bringing this back to the council for a conversation on July 12th. We have King County staff who will be joining us. And we're looking forward to a conversation with the council about the future of TDRs in the city. We have a TDR code that definitely needs some improvements. Needs some improvement in clarity, you know, with regard to where the sending sites are, et cetera. But I, I think at this point, the only implication that I could think of from this levy lid lift proposal would be is that there is additional land available for, to serve as sending sites to send units into the city that would be located within the county. So depending on the council's perspective on this, each council member might have a different perspective. It could be good in that you, you could receive extra density from areas worth conserving or preserving in King County. You could also see it as adding density to the city that maybe should be coming from within the city. It just depends on the perspective of different, each individual council member.
So to me, this is something that should have been a discussion that took place prior. So I don't see how, how the city can take a stance on this at the pick meeting.
Well, you can give feedback to Amy as far as concerns relative to it, though. It's just an informational piece, is that correct, Councilmember Lamb?
Yes, it's just a discussion.
So she can take back your comments? Yep, no, I see you, Councilmember Stewart. Go ahead.
So David, these additional sending sites, they wouldn't require us to take any more density. We wouldn't have to execute those TDRs. It would just create other potential sites, correct?
Correct. And I do need to correct myself, the numbers were, I believe, 20 TDRs are required, the first 20 and up to 50 TDRs, so I wanted to correct that, sorry.
It's a much lower number. And so I guess Amy, that would be the.
And so I guess Amy, that would be the thing, like, I like TDR programs in general. I would prefer we had TDR programs where we can transfer development rights within our city as opposed to outside, but it would be, I think, my feedback would be, let's get some more information about what, what does this mean? As long as there are no requirements for us to take TDRs from outside the city, they can identify all the sending sites they want to, that's fine. Because as I understand it, David, right, haven't we, haven't those 20 already been purchased?
That is my understanding, however, they haven't been built.
Right, but they've already been purchased, so that's, that's kind of already done.
So can we confirm and can we change the rest? Because the exchange rate on those, if I'm correct, is an exchange rate of one TDR to 10.
I think it's, it depends on the, on the sending zoning and receiving zoning.
So if we have a one TDR to 10 and we're talking about 70, or we're talking about 20, or we could be talking about 50, then that's a huge exchange. So I think we really need to have the information on that.
And that, that's the purpose of the conversation that we plan to have on the 12th.
All right, council, if there is not anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, council, we are adjourned. Thank you all.